Oh, and let's not even mention the bus rides home from school. I can see it now. My but driver rolling her eyes and giving a silent sigh as she proceeded through one of the most, if not the most controversial controversies. Uses. Those quite annoying higher. That was what made Worcester Worcester. It represented this crazy city. It represented our struggles and our triumphs. It's trying to that we could overcome the craziest things with a little bit of patience and courage. Now I'm not saying that I don't like all the advances going on, no, in fact. I'm actually happy that we have our own Worcester market. And the fact that we're going to have our very own baseball stadium right here in Worcester, forget about it. So I not forget the small shops and restaurants downtown that do me justice or my forty-five minute breaks at work. But I guess what I am saying is that, don't you think we should just stop for just a second? Don't you think we should just admire our city? I mean, I understand that the world is evolving. And that as such, our city must do so as too, but don't you think that? All of this will one day take away from the greatness and authenticity. Uh, sorry, of our city. Let's not be so caught up in turning our city into like a mini Boston that we forget who we really are. That we forget what we truly stand for. Diversity, unity, uniqueness, I could go on. I mean, a community that is not too big, but not too small either. I mean, as a kid, I used to be annoyed that I knew I was able to recognize almost every face on my side of the city. As I get older, I'm starting to think that that wasn't so bad after all. The fact that we don't have to wait until things escalate out of control before we come together as one to voice our opinions and concerns beyond amazing. We literally have the bragging rights to say that our city lies upon seven great hills. Just look around at this beautiful city of ours. Look at all the art that has been implanted in our buildings and in our neighborhoods. All the great, talented, ambitious and community-driven individuals raised within Worcester. Our very own walls. You see, I know changes, not at all, but. Let's not lose our remarkable culture and our worth in the process. Sincerely, a girl that wishes wishes for certain things to stay the same.
Thank you, Amena. It's very nice and I want to thank both you and Juan and yeah, thank you. Much appreciated. And I want to thank Aaron Williams and the Cultural Coalition for suggesting that you come on to next meeting, so. It's a pleasure, so stay safe and enjoy yourselves and get you back again with some new poetry and stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
We go next is a roll call for the election to see the author to his two-year term. Roll call.
Counselor Bergman.
Sorry, I apologize, my computer went out. What was the, what's the, um, before me?
Is the election to see the author to a two-year term?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Calorio?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Mark Carlson? Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Rosen?
Yes.
Counselor Russell? Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Counselor Wally? And Mayor Petty?
Alright, yes. Next up is approval of the minutes, we can talk on the roll call.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Calorio? Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Mark Carlson? Counselor Rivera?
She said yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Rosen?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Toomey?
Yes.
Counselor Wally? And Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes. Okay, public participation, a person may speak no more than two minutes on the agenda. Adrian, do you know how many people there are, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can't say exactly how many, um, there could be some administration, but it looks like attendees, we have about fifty, fifty-one people right now.
So we'll for about an hour, uh, we'll go to seven forty-five.
Uh, so let's see here, um, looks like the first bunch of people are call-in users, so just as a reminder, um, I'll unmute call-in users one at a time, if you could all please state your names. Um, we'll let you know if you're the person we can hear, uh, if you're calling on a device and I can differentiate your name, I'll call in your name. Um, please provide your name, city, your town or residence, and the item you're speaking on, and then you can begin your testimony immediately following that information. Uh, so with that being the case, I just unmuted one of the call-in users, could you all please state your names? See not hearing that call-in user, I'll move on from that call-in user. Uh, once again, could you all please state your?
Andrew Ahern.
Andrew Ahern.
Hi, my name's Andrew, I'm a resident of Worcester. I work in the, uh, city of Worcester and I'm also a member of Sunrise Worcester. I would like to speak on agenda item twenty-eight as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. A great policy the city has adopted is community choice aggregation, which allows the city to purchase green energy and sell electricity to customers at a cheaper rate than for-profit utility companies like National Grid. While I'm supportive of this policy, the city needs to think beyond just energy generation, but the future of for-profit utilities in the city as a whole. Last week, a study was released by the Climate Social Science Network out of Brown University, titled Who's Delaying Climate Action in Massachusetts? One of the major conclusions of the study draws, one of the major studies the conclusion draws is that investor-owned utilities are a key driver, if not the biggest driver, for delaying expansion of renewable energy and ambitious climate action. This is due in part to their lobbying, their power over legislators and control over energy distribution. For example, National Grid testified against solar net metering in twenty-fourteen, twenty-sixteen and twenty-eighteen legislative sessions, and also testified against making solar energy affordable to low-income and environmental justice communities. The city and Worcester businesses seem to recognize that National Grid and other utilities are bad actors. On page fifty of the Green Worcester Plan, I quote, "City businesses that want to install solar systems have found it very difficult to work with National Grid to tie into the grid." National Grid and other for-profit utilities are actively fighting against climate action. To quicken our transition to renewable energy and make it as affordable as possible, the city should invest in owning our own utilities, or at the very least, push the state to make it easier to allow cities to own their own utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let's see here, I just unmuted another call-in user, if you could all please state your names. See not hearing anyone from that line, we'll call, go to another call-in user, could you all please state your names? See not hearing anyone on that line, we'll go to another line, um, if you're calling on a phone, could you please state your names? Alright, I, one more time, please?
Suzanne Burke.
Suzanne Burke.
Hi Suzanne, uh, this is Suzanne Burke on Saxton Road in Worcester. Good evening all. Um, I'm speaking to item eleven G. And, um, our neighborhood group is petitioning for an extension of the existing fencing. Uh, we'd like to see a permanent, um, improvement to this area. Uh, in the past, there was an, um, upgrade to the grate in the culvert of Beaver Brook at the end of St. Paul Drive. We are appreciative of this improvement and the routine care of the DPW, a gentleman, um, who care for this area for, in every storm. Um, however, tonight we're requesting, uh, an extension of the fencing there for safety purposes. Um, here remains a key road in this area, it's a very easy and dangerous access in which, um, anyone really could slide directly into the brook. Um, we've had an increase of children in the neighborhood and the area is quite dangerous. Um, so we are hoping that tonight, um, this will be approved and the, um, safety measures can be implemented, um, to improve that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next person is another call-in user, could you all please state your names?
My name is Suzanne Grady.
You heard of Suzanne Grady?
Yes, yes, and I'm a member of the, I'm a member of the Worcester for the People's Party. And I'd like to speak on agenda twenty-eight as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. In the Green Worcester Plan, you would hardly know that our civilization is facing climate and ecological collapse. I would like to bring to attention that there is not one mention of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change or any leading scientific studies about the climate crisis. In fact, there is barely any science in the plan or mention of the many planetary boundaries our civilization has created, including biodiversity loss, carbon dioxide emissions, deforestation and much more. As a publicly facing document and one that should educate the city council and civilians of Worcester, the lack of science or context about our environmental problems is highly insufficient and worrying. I am asking that the Green Worcester Plan properly educate its readers, provide context for the situation we are in and tell the truth, reference to science and lead with justice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Jeffrey Bousha.
Hello, this is Jeffrey Boushey, I'm at three Joseph Street in Worcester. I'm a long-term resident, uh, grew up here in Worcester. I'd like to speak to the issue about the, uh, support for the, uh, ballpark for Polar Park and the item before the council. So I've, I've worked with, um, a great arts institution and organization named Art Reach on West Wilson Street in Worcester for a number of years. Um, and we've held many different events with the Woo Sox in conjunction with the Worcester Public Schools and school students. And I can truly tell you that, uh, the Woo Sox have attended every possible event and supported every, every effort and every proposal that we've made. They've been a great community partner. Um, they were even open to a suggestion that we have schoolchildren create artwork that adorns the construction site. Um, and they agreed to have students artwork and art programming within the ballpark, uh, when it is up and running. It, it's been a great organization and a great, um, group of people, including, um, a number of great people, but also a wonderful assumption graduate who's been, uh, doing an incredible, uh, amount of outreach um, to organizations like Art Reach and others. And then just finally, um, I can tell you again that I grew up here in Worcester. Um, my parents have lived in Worcester for seventy-five years. I brought them to recently to see the Worcester Market, the Polar Park and Kelly Square, as they haven't really been out and about in the city for, with COVID in a number, a number of months. Um, and their eyes just teared up. And, uh, they were just so very impressed and proud of the work of the city council, of the mayor, the manager, and Lieutenant Governor, the entire team that created this vision for Worcester. I mean, I do, um, I, I enjoyed the poetry earlier and, and certainly um, understand the viewpoints of those folks. I'd like to see the city begin to turn the page and move into this, uh, to move forward with this great opportunity and, and, and while still valuing, and I think they do, um, the organization values so much about Worcester, including the Harvey Ball, Smiley Face, um, and so many things about Worcester. So I think it is a great fit for the city and, and something that we all can be very proud of.
Next, I was on mute, sorry about that. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Elaine Volk.
Elaine?
Having some trouble unmuting here. Uh, Elaine's program is not letting me unmute her for some reason, I'm not sure, we'll try back later. Um, the next person I can get is Marie Brulette, I'll unmute Marie now.
Hi, my name is Marie Brulette, I am a Worcester resident, I live at twenty-five Oberlin. I'm calling in regards to agenda item twenty-eight as it pertains to the Worcester, the Green Worcester Plan. Um, I want to start by saying that I really do appreciate that Worcester is committing to a plan like this, given how much the city strives to be a leader in innovation, I think this is the exact kind of initiative that we want to take. Um, but there are having concerns raised by organizations and activists in the city that this plan lacks concrete guidelines that would ensure that we can make the most out of a plan like this and we can make it as ambitious as we need to. This includes notes to quicken renewable energy targets and citing information from scientific research and organizations such as the, uh, IPCC or the IPC in order to educate people in the city about the issue of climate, the climate crisis and how important it is that we take action right now. You know, so I think to bridge the gap between where we are with this plan and where we can be to be even more impactful and effective, I really encourage city officials to reach out to Sunrise Worcester, environmental experts, people who have the knowledge and the expertise to make this plan as bold and ambitious as it really needs to be for us to be able to make an impact, um, as a city and to be able to reduce our contribution to greenhouse emissions and the ongoing climate crisis. So again, I really want to emphasize, I appreciate where we started. Um, I just think we can go further and I think we can do more. Um, and I think we can do that by working with people in the city, organizations who are calling for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next person I can identify is Atel Hajiya.
Atel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Atel Hajiya, four Englewood Avenue, I'm here to speak on item twenty-eight. I am a volunteer with Mother's Outfront Worcester as well. My boys are nine and eleven, they'll be thirty-eight and forty in twenty-fifty, twenty-nine years from now. And I love my boys more than anything. I know that a lot of mothers out there driven by the love of our children are pushing for aggressive climate policies that match the urgency of the moment. So I'm here to say I'm fully supportive of the Green Worcester Plan. I'm deeply grateful for the work that Mr. Adele and Ms. Jarova have put forward in this plan. Um, however, among other things, it is our core obligation as a city to protect our kids from climate change, homelessness, substandard housing, things that are all interconnected. We must actualize these values with the same urgency that the scientists have warned us we need to act from and with. And so I joined the call of our friends at Sunrise Worcester to infuse the Green Worcester Plan with more urgency. I'm confident we can transform it from an aspirational document to an aggressive climate justice policy agenda with measurable short-term, long-term policy goals. Goals that advance affordable green housing, fair free, reliable, efficient WRTA, green construction, equitable zoning and no displacement for our neighbors. It's with the same urgency and intentionality that we must also center equity in this plan. Environmental justice communities didn't create the mess we're in, yet they bear the impact of the mass corporate interests like the ones who lobby Governor Baker to veto our, our state's first climate action bill have created. So we expect the passing of that historic climate bill at the State House in the next few days. Let's make the Green Worcester Plan be our next generation Worcester roadmap for climate policy, aggressively reducing carbon emissions from all sectors by twenty-thirty and into the next decade. With a more robust Green Worcester Plan, Worcester is poised to become a leader and promote environmental and housing justice, so no one is subjected to living in substandard moldy housing with unaffordable rents, expensive utility bills, is vulnerable to extreme heat waves and frigid weather while experiencing homelessness or breathing methane from gas masks while walking our streets. This is the time to be bold, relentless and aggressive, almost done, in protecting our communities and children from the harms of climate change. Putting more savings in the pockets of our residents and small businesses and creating green jobs. I would love to see that we make the Green Worcester Plan a living, breathing, next-generation roadmap that can lead my boys and every child to livable future. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Allison James.
Hi, I'm calling into, I'm Allison James from Richmond Ave, Worcester, and I'm also the Chief Operating Officer at Girls Inc. of Worcester. And I'm calling in on agenda item nineteen A. Um, as you probably know, Girls Inc. is located on the edges of the Canal District and we are really excited to be welcoming Polar Park to our neighborhood. We are excited about the influx of jobs and other opportunities for our girls and their families. And we hope the redesign of Kelly Square and other transportation solutions will help increase the access to our programs. Lastly, we're appreciative of the philanthropic values and support the foundation will bring to Worcester. We've appreciated the support from the foundation as we brought our girls to Pawtucket and know that this will only be enhanced when they are right in our neighborhood. So we are in support of the additional funds for the Polar Park.
Thank you. Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I could identify is a, uh, Dennis Mahoney, I'll unmute Dennis now. Not hearing Dennis, um, we'll move to, let's see here. Uh, Brian Mulhern, I'll unmute Brian now.
Hello?
Go ahead, Brian, what's your name?
Uh, my name is Brian Mulhern and I'm a resident of Worcester and a member of Worcester for People's Party. I would like to speak on agenda item twenty-eight as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. In twenty-eighteen, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change stated that limiting global warming to one point five degrees Celsius will require cutting global carbon emissions in half by twenty-thirty, reaching net zero around twenty-fifty. The Green Worcester Plan does not reference this fact or build the city's climate efforts around this warning. We need to listen to science and be guided by justice. Although there are some admirable goals in the plan, the Green Worcester Plan lacks the ambition and speed to tackle the climate and ecological crises. In future drafts, I would like to see a quicker rollout of renewable energy in shorter time spans to ensure the safety of our people and planet. I would also like to see specific policies as it concerns equity and justice. Equity and justice needs to be more than just a lens, but woven into citywide policy. Our city streets need to be designed and planned around people and their ability to take public transportation, bicycle or walk, not individual cars. The people of Worcester deserve to live in the greenest mid-sized city in America, as the plan describes. However, this draft of the Green Worcester Plan does not match that goal or the severity of the crises we're in. I'm asking for a more bold and ambitious agenda to save our city and the planet from the existential threats of climate change and ecological collapse. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here, the next person I can identify is Erin By- Brian. Uh, I'll unmute Erin now.
Hello, uh, my name is Erin Bryan, I am a, uh, resident of thirty-two Lee Street in Worcester, also a Worcester student and a Sunrise Worcester member, and I would like to speak on agenda item twenty-eight as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. Uh, in September twenty-twenty, the Worcester Council, uh, voted unanimously to pass a climate emergency declaration which declared an end to citywide greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible and no later than twenty, than twenty-thirty. And when I heard this, I was, I was stunned, I was thrilled, I was like, finally, a city in Massachusetts that is treating the climate crisis with the urgency that it deserves. But then the Green Worcester Plan hardly mentions the climate emergency declaration and that was, even though I, I'm very appreciative of all that the Green Worcester Plan push, pushes for, I believe we can go further to match the pace and ambition set by the climate emergency declaration. Um, in the unanimous vote, the city council seemed to recognize the urgent threat of climate change and that emergency declaration and the votes of councillors has been completely disregarded as previously mentioned in the Green Worcester Plan. To all the city councillors, I am really asking you to stick to that vote that you made last September and to commit to ending citywide greenhouse gases by twenty-thirty. Please do not make that emergency declaration, uh, simply a symbolic vote. Uh, put an end to citywide greenhouse gases by twenty-thirty so I can ensure a livable generation for my future and for the following ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Ron Waddell. I'll unmute Mr. Waddell now.
Good evening, Ron Waddell, resident of Worcester and also a, uh, leader of a nonprofit here in the city. I'm here to speak on agenda item, uh, nineteen A. First one to recognize the artistic, uh, poetry that was, uh, part of the opening, it was great. Uh, speaking of nineteen A, just wanted to mention that whenever endeavoring on any new venture, whether personal or communal, there are certain amounts of unknowns and with that come varying opinions. Uh, to that end, welcoming the Red Sox minor league team to our city has certainly come with married sentiments and the court of public opinion. And, uh, some of those views are mixed for me as well. Uh, but for our organization, the Woo Sox have been a valuable philanthropic partner. Um, open to listening to the perspective of participants who have historically been marginalized from, uh, such public discourse. I've worked with some of their front office staff to share where challenges as it relates to where our populations are served. They've supported our mission, um, in varying ways. Staff such as Kim Minor, Alex Richardson and Sabria Chaudry have made themselves available and engaged in courageous conversations around some of the sensitive topics that are impacting our city in respect to, uh, all the social upheaval that's going on. With all that said, in this particular agenda item, as I understand it, the ten million dollars is being bonded and the Red Sox are paying the debt service on those. And the rest will be in the form of cash and other equity, so the fourteen million is the bonding amount, which covers the ten million plus interest. And so in scope of all the work, uh, this particular energy item, agenda item, I think the Red Sox should be commended for this arrangement. And at this point in the process, I support that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Okay, next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have another call-in user, so once again, could all people on telephones please state their names? Let's see, not hearing anyone, we'll move on to Paul Popinchak, I'll unmute Paul now.
Uh, good evening, uh, this is Paul Popinchak, I live at thirty-four Midland Street in Worcester. And I'm calling regarding agenda item twenty-eight. I applaud the city, uh, for their, uh, goal of, uh, creating a sustainable city. And, um, and yet I, I, I encourage the addition of a metric that will measure the net benefit of some of the investments that will be made, uh, to support this plan. Because on the one hand, while, um, bringing Polar Park in will be good for jobs and, um, whose jobs are they? Who's building, uh, Polar Park? Um, let's add a metric that looks at the city residents who get to participate um, in these programs, um, that are being subsidized with our tax dollars. And also, let's look at the, um, neighborhood who will bear the burden of the increased emissions. Um, traffic and transportation emissions are one of the higher contributors to overall air quality in Worcester. And it will be the under-COVIDs neighborhoods around Polar Park that will need to bear the most direct, uh, brunt of that addition. And likewise, um, we seek to become a sustainable city and yet we just, uh, wiped out a forest in the interest of, um, bringing a Amazon distribution center, uh, to the airport area. And so let's add a metric of our, our net, the net benefit to the environment so that we may be better stewards of the environment as we, uh, face the threat of the climate crisis we find ourselves in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have another call-in user, once again, I just unmuted all call-in users, could you all please state your names?
This is Evelyn Darling.
I believe it was a Ms. Darling?
Yes, this is Evelyn Darling, I'm a resident of Worcester. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Worcester Business Improvement District. And I am here, uh, to speak on item eleven C on public restrooms. The mission of the Downtown Worcester Business Improvement District, or the BID as we're known, um, is to help downtown, to help make downtown Worcester more vibrant and welcoming. And we represent the ish, uh, the interests of property owners within our district, which is centered around City Hall. We support this order to provide public bathroom facilities, um, that are open during COVID, as well as, um, facilities that would be open long-term once the pandemic ends. And especially, um, those facilities that are in and near downtown. Due to a lack of bathroom facilities, especially at night, um, some people without shelter have been using the entrances and alcoves to some of the businesses here downtown to relieve themselves. Our ambassadors who are working hard every day to keep downtown clean, um, they're the ones that often have the extremely unpleasant task of cleaning up the mess. And this makes their jobs more dangerous during this pandemic. The police are tasked with trying to stop this from happening, but we really believe strongly that we're- leaving a bodily function, um, shouldn't be a criminal offense. Finding both immediate and long-term solutions to this problem is something we've been discussing with the city for many months. We've mobilized a group of property and business owners who are very interested in working, um, with us and with the city on developing solutions that can be implemented and implemented fast. We've applied for a grant, a planning grant from the state, which we're, um, we believe, you know, we hope we'll get. And we're very committed to helping to assist with maintenance and security needs. So we look forward to working with the city to address this challenging problem. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's see here. The next person I can identify is a Gwen Wesinger.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Gwen Wesinger. I'm a Worcester resident and a hub coordinator with some Sunrise Worcester. Um, I'm speaking on Item 20A as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. I'm asking that the city of Worcester quicken its renewable energy targets by at least five years for each of the three targets described in Chapter 3A. Um, as previously mentioned, in 2018, the IPCC warned us that we have until 2030 to halve global carbon emissions, to stay within a safe level of global warming and to avoid climate collapse. The current version of the Green Worcester Plan aims to be 100% renewable in all sectors by 2045. Um, this target disregards scientific findings, and it really shows the youth of your city, of our city, that you're not fully invested in giving us the best shot possible at a livable future. The ambitious targets that we're really begging for may seem radical to you, and we really appreciate the work that you're already doing and the targets that you're setting. But what we think is radical is not acting fast enough. Climate-related disaster is happening right now. Um, please stop putting climate resiliency and adaptation on the back burner. The longer that you push these targets and the less ambitious that you are right now, the more deadly and disastrous the mess we inherit. And when we have our meetings, we, we talk about these things, and we're really worried about the future that we're looking at. Um, so we know that we're asking for a lot, but we also know from all the time and effort that you put into our community that you believe future generations deserve a livable and fulfilling future. And the Green Worcester Plan, um, with more ambitious targets allows us to have hope for that. So please quicken your renewable energy targets and give us a reason to be hopeful for our futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, AJ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Ian Williamson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name's Ian Williamson. I'm speaking about the matter of the new ballpark. Um, I'm a Dordie High grad and a current student of Holy Cross and, uh, also the co-executive director of Working for Worcester. So the Woo Sox have been a tremendous supporter of our project of building recreational spaces in schools and community spaces. And we would really not be able to do what we do with other partnership and support. Uh, additionally, I would like to highlight that the Woo Sox have been instrumental in the drive-through food pantry this month at Worcester State University. Through the first three weeks, 60 to 70,000 pounds of food have been distributed to people in need. Uh, as an active member of the community, I'm excited for the future of the Woo Sox. I think it's awesome that they haven't played a game yet in Worcester, but I've still been very involved, uh, with the community. I'm looking for, forward to what the future holds.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here. This person I can identify is an Erin Drum. I'll unmute Erin now. Not hearing Erin. Um, let's see here. It's, uh, Sadis Scott Khan. See, Sadis Scott Khan's, um, not letting me unmute them. So let's see, the next person would be Samantha Freed.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can, yes.
Excellent. Um, my name is Samantha Freed, and I'm a resident of Worcester. I would like to speak on Agenda Item 20A as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. The GWP recognizes that transportation is the largest greenhouse gas emitting sector in the state of Massachusetts. And while electric vehicles are part of the solution, um, continuing to plant cities around cars is not environmentally sustainable, nor is it equitable. I want to acknowledge that some of the measures in the plan are really good. Zero emissions villages, complete street programs, and the creation of more bike lanes. However, there is too much attention on electric vehicles. There's not enough attention on the ways in which public and other non-car forms of transportation can be increased and made more affordable and accessible. I think the plan is a really valuable initiative and the kind of initiative that the city should be focusing on. It would be a much stronger initiative if the city considered hiring an urban planner who specializes, for instance, in sustainable transportation to help push the city along this route. And if city council and the city manager worked more closely with groups like Sunrise Worcester and other activists in the city, environmental and otherwise, to more thoroughly assess needs around sustainable public transportation in a grounded way. Thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
So let's see here. We have another call-in user. Uh, once again, I just muted a call-in user. Could you all please state your names?
Sandy Meltzer.
We heard, uh, Sandy Meltzer, I believe?
That's correct.
Just have your city or town a residence, and the item you're speaking on, you can begin your testimony.
Okay, so, um, I walk a lot. I, I'm actually, uh, Sandy Meltzer, I'm Richmond Avenue, Worcester. And, um, I'm calling about, uh, 11G, the, the, um, St. Paul Drive, um, culvert. And I walk a lot by that, that area. I, about, it's a really an attractive nuisance, um, in the, in the really literal sense. About 50 years ago, a former neighbor's five-year-old child drowned right nearby the culvert. His grandmother was, was babysitting the children while the parents were at work and didn't notice that the child left the house. And it's a third of a mile away, so it wasn't even an, a thing, a neighbor. And I've also witnessed a young child about eight years, eight or nine years old in the water at the culvert and told him it's a dangerous place to play, and another child had come on bicycles. And, um, it's a really steep, uh, decline there, very easy for, for a child to, uh, to slip into it. So, uh, I really hope that there's some kind of protection that's put around there so that a child can't, or, or anybody can fall down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here. The next person I can identify is a Bill Stock. I'll unmute Mr. Stock now. See, not hearing Mr. Stock. Um, see, the next person we can identify is a Kevin Rissmiller. I just unmuted Mr. Rissmiller now.
Hello, um, my name is Kevin Rissmiller. I am a member of Sunrise Worcester, and I'd like to speak to you on Agenda Item 20A as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. Um, I won't repeat, uh, all of the comments that my fellow Sunrise Worcester, um, friends have made. Um, but I just want to echo my support for those comments and establish that Sunrise Worcester and other environmental organizations are 100% willing to work with city council members, with any member of the city of Worcester, to make a plan that would be effective for our city. Unfortunately, the current plan does not meet our standards or environmental advocate standards in general. But we are happy to work with the city on making a plan that is more serious about taking on climate change, and I hope that you will consider working with us.
Thank you. Uh, AJ, we should note too that this report, the, uh, is going to go to committee for, for a discussion, so.
Let's see here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is a Hannah Snell. I'll unmute, uh, Hannah now.
Hi, um, my name is Hannah Snell, and I am a Sunrise Worcester member. I would like to speak on Agenda Item 20A as it concerns the Green Worcester Plan. Appreciate the work that has been done on this plan, and I think it has potential to influence the rest of the county as well as the state. On page 21 of the Green Worcester Plan, the plan defines sustainability as meeting the needs of present generations without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. If this is so, why is there no consideration beyond the year 2050 in the plan? We cannot think beyond 30 years, then we are not engaged in sustainability according to the plan's own definition. As someone deeply concerned about the climate crisis for my future generation and future ones, we cannot wait until 2045 to do all that is needed, nor think that planning 30 years in the future makes us sustainable. We need intergenerational justice. The plan needs both more ambition in the short term and planning for the long term. I believe the city should further review the Green Worcester Plan to meet the critical moment we are in and increase the speed, scope, and scale of the plan. I ask that you think of my generation, your children, and your children's children when drafting the plans and policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. The next person I can identify is a Darcy Schwartz. I'll unmute Darcy now.
Hi, my name is Darcy Schwartz, and, um, I'm a resident of Worcester. I live on Lennox Street. Um, I'm actually the owner of Art Reach, an art studio in Worcester, and I've had the pleasure of working with, uh, the Woo Sox on several collaborative art projects. If you've driven by, I think someone else mentioned it earlier, if you've driven by the fence, um, you, um, you, and you've seen the artwork that was done by our students. Um, I'm in support of, um, uh, excuse me, 19A, um, this evening. And I just want to say that, um, they are really committed to being, um, to doing things for the community, to doing things with the community, and to doing things with the kids. Um, I'm always saying that for a city like Worcester to continue to grow and evolve creatively and in other ways, you have to engage, um, the youngest members of the community, and those are our children who are, who are in kind of a hard time now. Um, the Worcester Public Schools is doing a great job of, of remote learning, but it's still difficult on them and having them, being a remote learning hub, having students in the studio. I can tell you they're very excited about having a ballpark, about maybe going to opening day, about, just about a year ago now, we had, um, Dr. Steinberg in the studio, Joe Bradley, um, Alex Richardson, um, for a big event that was sold out. We made banners, uh, we made pictures, and we celebrated, um, this wonderful, uh, baseball team coming to our city. Um, America's favorite pastime is baseball, and I think that, um, the Woo Sox are worth supporting. Um, our studio supports them. We're looking forward to working with them. We're looking for, we actually have something planned with our Worcester Public Schools children in our Fun Friday event to do something for them. So, um, I want to, uh, give them all my support and, um, and hope that everyone else will too. I know that the money is a big thing, but, and this will sound, um, it's just money. We're in the middle of something bigger than money, and to bring joy to all of us at a baseball game will be fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, AJ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is an Alex Rothfelder.
Hi, everyone. How's it going? Um, thanks so much for having me. Um, I just wanted to speak on a couple of different, uh, agenda items. I did want to speak, um, first, uh, I believe 20A. I do believe in a more ambitious Green Worcester Plan. I think it's kind of one of those things where I am really happy that there is a plan in the first place, but we do just want to see the scope of the plan met by, uh, even what we're seeing federally, the rapid change and the damage that Trump has done, you know, us making progress on this. And also see Worcester really be a leader on this. Um, as a resident, I live at Greenwood Parkway, by the way, I went for. And I used to bike around the city all the time. I actually loved biking, but at the time, it was because I didn't have a car. I also didn't want to be part of injecting, you know, carbon emissions too. And I know that there's, uh, better, you know, there's some efforts to expand bike lanes and everything like that in the plan. But I do think that transportation is a really key part of it, given that, again, it's been said before that, uh, emissions from cars and transportation are a really big part of the body, the air quality, so that in Worcester, Massachusetts. Just biking in Worcester is not safe. You eventually just have to stop and go to a car. Really changed something that I like to do and something that is better. So I also just wanted to touch, um, again, 11M. I, I do also think that that's a really good step. But when we're thinking about, uh, the $14 million going to Polar Park, I mean, hearing that homeless folks are having to basically use the bathroom outside businesses and stuff like that, I think that's really speaking to a really bad crisis in the city. I honestly do not think that the $14 million going, going to that stadium is, is appropriate, given the environmental crisis we're seeing, given the crisis in public health, and given the prices of housing.
Okay, thank you. AJ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Steve Carrigan. I'll unmute Steve now.
Hello, uh, I'm Steve Carrigan. I'm President and CEO of the Kennedy Community Health Center, uh, over in Great Brook Valley. Uh, I am here in support of 19A and the Woo Sox and Polar Park. Um, we at Kennedy Community Health, our motto is that we help people live healthier lives, and we provide, uh, access to quality healthcare regardless of people's ability to pay. Uh, and we have a lot of partners in our community that work with us on all kinds of social determinants of health to try to make sure we create a healthier and stronger community. And I will say that the Paw Sox and now the Woo Sox have been a partner of ours for a number of years through family and community building programs that focus on, uh, creating healthier, uh, lifestyles and healthier pathways uh, for living. And we are so incredibly excited that they are coming here, uh, to Polar Park and to Worcester, and we continue uh, to look forward to partnering with them, uh, in here, uh, here in Worcester to create more opportunities for healthier living for the people in our communities, not just for our patients, but for everybody in our community. And we're so excited about them coming here that not only did I and my family purchase season tickets, but we also got them for frontline healthcare workers at our sites so that they can bring their families, uh, and enjoy a day, uh, at Polar Park and also, uh, invest in our communities and invest in that revitalization that's gone on down in Kelly Square. Uh, we're very much excited, uh, after this, uh, long cold winter that has now gone well through a summer and a fall, uh, and will go through a springtime, uh, that one this is all over with, uh, to be joining with so many in our community at Polar Park, uh, not just celebrating, um, uh, baseball and being outside and being together again, but celebrating the community as a whole. And, uh, the Woo Sox and Polar Park, uh, already are tremendous partners, uh, in not just, um, community building organizations, but, um, for healthcare organizations like ours and so much more. So I'm, I'm thrilled to be here to support them and look forward, uh, to being at opening day at Polar Park. Uh, and before I go, I must say, as, uh, someone who works in healthcare, uh, in this community, thank you to the members of the city council, to our elected and appointed officials in Worcester who have stood up like no other across the Commonwealth, uh, to support us in this difficult time as we work to serve, uh, our community members and our patients. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Walter Burns. I'll unmute, uh, Walter now.
I'm here about the Luther Rad matter, and Sean, uh, Rose was gonna speak on my behalf. My attorney couldn't make it today, and, uh, we were at a ma, a meeting last week, and supposedly the vote was coming before the council today. That's why we are here. And he couldn't find it listed on the, uh, on the paperwork for us. So, uh, I know I talked to you myself, Mr. Cottle, and, uh, I have information in front of me. I don't know what I can show you, what I can't show you.
Well, what's the item, sir? I'm sorry. Is it on the agenda, Sean? Oh, no.
It's item number 17C.
17C, okay.
Mr. Chairman, as, um, we're, we're likely gonna hold that, and that's what I shared with the, uh, resident. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna hold that till next week, sir? So, uh, we'll have more time probably next week to talk about it. Okay. And you can call, uh, Sean, you're in touch with him? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, with that being the case, the next speaker I can identify is a Tim McKeerney. Let's see, not hearing Tim well. We'll move to Monique McNeil. Not hearing Monique McNeil. We'll move to a Katie Friend.
I'm here.
Okay, Katie.
Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Katie Friend, and I live on St. Paul Drive. I'm calling, um, in about, um, 11G. I first want to thank, um, the DPW workers for their care and attention to the brook. Um, I first want to thank the DPW workers for their care and attention to the Brook. I know in the past, there's been significant flooding issues, and their care and attention, you know, weekly, if not daily, sometimes during different storms, is really outstanding. So we appreciate that here in the neighborhood. But I'm also calling because our neighborhood is home to many children, including my own, as well as hitting the back of Flag Street School. So there's a tremendous amount of children playing at the playground. The Brook is a curiosity, and I think there's an opportunity for increased safety measures around the Brook. And I'd just like to thank the council for considering this enhanced fencing around the area, because I do think that, as Sandy mentioned, you know, in the past, there was an accident, but I just think there's a potential for, you know, an issue if, if it's not addressed.
Thank you. AJ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Kevin Cassent. I'll unmute Kevin now.
I'm just listening in. Thanks.
Thank you. With that being the case, the next person I can identify is Logan LaFlame. Let's see, not hearing Logan, we'll move on to a call-in user. Could all people on telephones please state their names?
Sue Mailman.
I heard a Sue Mailman.
Yes.
Sue Mailman? Sue Mailman, I live in Worcester. I just wanted to comment briefly on two items. Eleven L is Councilor Carlson's item about shots for the seniors, and I would just impress upon you that the state is doing such a crappy job letting us know where people can get shots and where people can't get shots, and if it's part of our, you know, public health item to make sure that we're better communicating, maybe we can put something on our website for the city instead of pointing it to the state, because they are not giving us timely information. And then lastly, I just wanted to say on nineteen A that, you know, we asked for union jobs, and I think I'm hearing ninety-nine percent of the jobs at the ballpark are union jobs, and I'm certainly grateful that that came to fruition, as well as the goals for diversity on the project, I believe, have been met. Those are important things. I have as much concern, as I've stated at other meetings, about making sure everybody gets paid when the job is complete, complete, but we should recognize what has been accomplished there, and I, me and my cousin and I still have tickets for the grandchildren, so we're gonna go to the games. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Rena Grasso.
Yes? Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties here. I guess what I want to say, I have been a lifelong environmentalist. I see no single more important and urgent issue than all of the significant changes and steps that we must take to avert the kind of catastrophes that global warming and climate change mean. I, I have to say that this plan is radically and gravely disconnected to any sense of emergency or that urgency that pertains for our world. It is radically disconnected. I am not going to address any one of its elements. I'm going to address the whole plan itself, which is abstract, all over the place. It lacks any concrete steps, any measurable steps. It avoids setting any priorities. It is the vagus. It is not the kind of document that is appropriate to a sense of emergency. I also have to say that this very council that voted for emergency, I question whether the council truly understands emergency, because this document is not a document for an emergency. I also doubt the council's understanding of climate change, because this city has nullified the ban on plastic bags for no reason, for no health reason. There is no scientific reason to connect plastic bags to COVID crisis. Other cities don't do it, but this city does. And that is a concrete step that demonstrates a lack of depthful understanding of what it takes to combat climate change. This is a step, but that's what climate change urgency means. You identify the steps, and you take them.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yeah, I'm wrapping up the comments. This is not a plan that matches an emergency. I too volunteer to be a person who knows how to draft a strategic plan. I have a PhD. I am a researcher. I am a thinker.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, next speaker, AJ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person I can identify is Deb Carey. I'll unmute Deb now.
And the question is, is this something that would help us with the discussion? And I can send this slide out to people to look at it in more detail.
I think we're getting it off.
Yeah, please do.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Oh, I just said, definitely send us that.
AJ, could we?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but I believe it went through everybody that that was the last person.
Okay, perfect. It got through everybody, and I think we would. Good job, everyone. Okay, okay. We are going back to the agenda. Hearings and orders, the motions to open the hearing regarding a national grid condo location at Terror Street, condo location, I mean, an Ever Source condo location in Manhattan Street, and Ever Source on, was it New Bond Street? And so, motions to open the hearing, roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We've got petitions, nine A to nine A refer to the, the roll call, and nine J to nine P refer to dropping the parking lot.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We've got petitions, nine A to nine A refer to the, the roll call, and nine J to nine P refer to dropping the parking lot.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have chairman's orders, ten A to ten J, off the roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Council Toomey?
Mr. Chairman, could we go back to the nine O? I needed to make a change on that.
Motion to suspend the rules. We'll go back to nine O, and the change is?
Just remove Anne Hiding Street.
Okay.
It's fine, just where Wentworth Street and Grafton Street intersect.
Okay, as amended, roll call.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilor Bergman?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Council King's.
Just, just asking, is this a vote for reconsideration? What, what, is that what we're doing now, or is it something different than that?
Well, I was just gonna try to speed up the process, but we can.
I'm just asking procedurally if we're, if we're good.
Okay, so vote is for reconsideration first, roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a procedure question. I just voted on this a second ago, now something else I think has been added. What are we reconsidering?
We're reconsidering the item.
Which item, Mr. Chairman?
Nine O.
Wasn't that just a request to change it?
Yeah, but, I mean, it's a roll call reconsider.
That's fine. Now I understand that I'm happy to vote. It's just confusing. I already voted once, I'm happy to vote a second time, but I just want to know what I'm voting on. That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
We did vote.
Yep, the motion is to reconsider, roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, the motion is to take Hiding Street out of that, as amended, roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, ten A to ten J, these are chairman's orders, off the roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Maybe we can suspend the rules and a couple of items that people are waiting for and speed up the process, the motion to suspend the rules to go to nineteen A, nineteen A, and twenty A. Roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria? Councilor Caloria? Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so we can take fourteen and nineteen A collectively?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be recusing myself.
Yeah, Councilor Wally has recused himself. Council, council, completely deal with us now, and I thought some prayers goes out to Council, I should have mentioned earlier that Chair Loaster, or Petty had passed away, and wish her well. So let's, so roll call.
Councilor Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Carlson? Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Rosen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally recused himself, and Mayor Petty?
Yes. Twenty A Communication C, Manager, String Information Communication, and Green Worcester Sustainability and Resilience, teacher claim draft, as we own the political. Mr. Manager, do you want to open up your comment?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Nice to mention too that this is, this is gonna go to Urban Technology Committee for further discussion on this too, so people who are listening can also probably comment again in more depth at a committee meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, sorry, apologies for.
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do want to just specifically first thank Mr. Odell and Lubah from the Energy Asset Management Office, who've put in just countless hours working with a group of citizens, eighteen citizens, who over a year period helped along with a consultant draft the Green Worcester Plan that's before you tonight. It's the product of more than three hundred and fifty community comments and feedback that earlier drafts of the plan took into account and made adjustments to the plan that's before you. And I would say that, you know, a plan is just that, it's a living document, it will be updated as technologies change, as opportunities for funding or regulatory actions take place at the state and federal level create different opportunities for us to do more and to take advantage of, you know, opportunities to move on a more aggressive schedule. I would say that it's so important, I think, that people remember all of the commitments that this council has made, not only in the declaration of the emergency of taking action around climate change, but even before that, this council and this administration worked together and the taxpayers of Worcester in building the largest municipally-owned solar farm in all of New England on the Greenwood landfill site, which is fourteen football fields worth of solar energy that are created there and sold back to the grid and offsetting some of our electricity costs. We replaced fourteen thousand streetlights with LED. We just finished replacing every light in every school and municipal building to LED. That is good for the taxpayer, because it's reducing our cost of energy, and it's good for the environment, and it's reducing our carbon footprint. And there probably isn't a month that goes by, we're not asking the council, we did just last week over at Cascade Park, for additional purchases of land or purchases of conservation restriction on land, whether it be around our reservoir system or in our other open spaces in the city, as we continue to try to preserve open space, and all that that means for the environment, for wildlife, for habitat, for protection of our drinking water. Nelson Place School will put in the final solar arrays this summer, and Nelson Place School will be a net zero school. That's a school that for the next thirty, forty-plus years will serve all of the kids in that neighborhood, as well as from across the city, and be net zero. So I heard one of our last callers say, you know, there's no steps, there's no, we've been making steps in this direction, you know, for years now. Now we have a plan based on the council's call for further action, and again, that plan can be updated as new technologies present themselves. I know the new administration in Washington looks like it's gonna put a lot of priority around climate change, and there may be new funding opportunities, new regulatory environments, and then we can update the plan as necessary. But the plan reflects a lot of input from our citizens, a lot of input from the community. We submit it to the council as a commitment on all of our part to really take seriously the issue of climate change, and I would say, look around, I don't see many other cities laying out a plan, putting together a commitment the way this plan does, and we look forward to the hearings and the further discussions in the committee, and then when it comes back to the council. So again, I want to thank all the team that was involved, the Citizens Committee that was involved, and put in a lot of volunteer hours to develop this, and all the citizens who took time to give feedback and input. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Council Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to reviewing this in more detail to Urban Technology, Innovation, and Environment Committee, but I just want to commend not only the administration, but the list of the working group. I look at a cross-section of individuals from Worcester who helped put this plan together, and when I see leaders such as Deb Carey and Steve Fisher, I know that this is a great plan. And, you know, certainly as we heard through some of the comments, some people don't think it's as, um, urgent, or we're not taking as, as many urgent steps as needed, but I think this is a very practical plan. And I think that's important. As we move forward, we need to look at something that's very practical. And I love the fact that this plan, uh, has, has deadlines. We wanna know when we can reach steps, and this plan does so. You know, someone mentioned that, you know, we're take, we're putting steps on the back burner. I think, you know, if we were to put anything on the back burner, we wouldn't be doing anything. When I look at this robust report, we're actually taking action, and I think that's a great, a great job. But through you, to the manager, I know this plan goes out very far, but have we done anything to quantify the cost of such a plan?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'll have Mr. Odell, uh, you know, take that one.
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair, this is, uh, um, a good question. It is, uh, not something that we have taken into in specific. We have looked into this in the broad strokes, knowing that change is constant in this field, and has been, uh, we only anticipate it will accelerate. Uh, what we have de- devised here is something that we believe we ca- we have the means to implement right now. Of course, as the manager earlier, uh, just mentioned, as resources and technology change over the, um, and regulations change over the ensuing years, we'll be able to take advantage of that, um, to in, both increase the amount of work that we can do to implement this plan is, as well as possibly, uh, change the plan itself to be more aggressive. So that's the goal here, um, that's what, uh, I think it's fair to say that we have developed something that will serve the long-term interest of the city, both as it stands now and in the future.
Thank you very much. Just wrapping up, you know, I think it's a great plan. Climate change is very real. You rarely hear anyone who would be defined as a climate change skeptic anymore. Uh, so I look forward to, again, discussing this in more detail at the committee level, and, uh, commend the administration, the working group on putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Toomey?
Chair, I too, uh, look forward to, um, talking about this and hearing more about it and, and having further discussions, um, uh, in the committee, uh, especially, uh, as it comes, uh, relates to, um, to financing, uh, projects, and also the city's, uh, future building, um, as well as, as we move forward, um, toward this, uh, goal, these goals. I do have an edit, um, if you don't mind, in the interest of Equity, um, in the front, uh, front page, in the list of, uh, of the, um, working group. If we could, um, add that, uh, Connie Luke's, uh, who's a resident, former city councilor, she's also a former mayor, um, as I know we have a, a former mayor, uh, Joe O'Brien listed, um, and would add, former, uh, yeah, he was city councillor as well, but, um, if we could add that Connie was a former mayor, that would be helpful.
Okay. Counsel?
And, yep. Thank you.
We have Counsel Corr, for my Counsel King. I Counsel Roll.
Thank you. Um, so, I spent a lot of time reviewing this document, and I have several questions, and some of them I'll wait till it goes into committee. Um, I think it's really a good thing that we're doing more tree planting. I've always been a good advocate of tree planting for many reasons. Healthy green spaces, healthy blue spaces, reduce influence. This is really important, and I think it's a good, healthy city. But I do, one of my main concerns is that, um, during the coronavirus, a lot of people have had a lot of anxiety when it comes to finances. This plan is concerning me, and I'm gonna tell you why, and I'm gonna ask for a report. So, one of the things is that, um, it appears to me that we have a timeline, and I'll ask this through the manager, of, um, of re- of the city converting to electricity, from natural gas to electricity. Is that correct, through the chair, to the city manager?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, that is the goal. Uh, we're doing it with new construction. Uh, we've made some of those decisions as we plan for Doherty High School, uh, which really puts us, I think, consistent with the plan, but also puts us consistent where the lower-cost energy sources are ultimately gonna be, uh, which is important, both for the green energy, uh, the Green Worcester Plan and the taxpayers. But I'll let Mr. Odell kind of expand on that, if he would.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, through the chair, um, uh, so just to, to touch base on what, uh, the manager's mentioned, um, it, the cost of, um, fossil fuels has, um, is based on the cost right now to distribute, to extract the fossil fuel and to distribute it to where it needs to go, transport it either through pipes or trucks to wherever it needs to go, whether it's oil or gas. What it does not include is the cost to, uh, to the environment. And that is a substantial cost that is simply, at this point, being borne by taxpayers as we need to make, uh, and will be much more expensive for taxpayers as time goes on in order to address the climate change. We believe that those costs are slowly but surely, and already are starting to, through the Regi program that Massachusetts is a participant in. Um, we believe that those costs will be, uh, born in gas and, uh, and oil, uh, in, in, in particular, over the next few years, and coal as well. And therefore, electricity will actually, renewable electricity will actually be the low-cost energy source. Switching now puts us in a huge advantage, actually, going forward in terms of our costs and expenses for the taxpayer. That's why we think that this is a, a wise decision, um, both economically as well as environmentally.
Through the chair, um, I have a couple of the questions, and I'd like a report on this. If we were to convert today from gas to electricity, um, according to my numbers, um, that the, a resident who's paying twelve hundred dollars in gas would be paying six thousand dollars for electricity, not including converting the boil- boiler over. That, to me, concerns me with people not being able to even spend, um, rent their homes anymore, not pay for the heating. I think it puts, it, in all measures, this is not, to me, it doesn't appear to be equitable, because it leaves out those that can't afford, um, or in a low-income bracket. So what I would like is, through the chair, I'd like a report before we get to committee with this, so we have this report at committee, of what the cost to convert now, because in the future, we don't, don't know what it will hold. We could have great advances in technology, but we're talking now. We're starting a plan now, so we should know the cost now. So if we could get a report out of what it would cost to convert a home now from gas to electricity, and would this exclude the people that are in the gas field now? Would it include, would it exclude the laborers that are working? This, it, this leaves a lot of questions about, and I don't think it's a solid plan on a financial measure. It appears to answer questions, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the numbers to go with it. So if we were to look at this and say, it's gonna cost a resident, I don't know, six times more to heat their house, but the environment will be better, is that something that we as a city with a medium income of forty-five thousand a year can afford to move forward? So I'd like that report before this, when this gets to committee, so we can look at the numbers. Um, I don't know if City Manager can put that together, um, but I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will be, uh, form of a motion, um, Mr. Corl's report, roll call.
Counsel Birdman?
Yes.
Counsel Calorio?
Yes.
Counsel King? Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Mark Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Uh, who was next was Counsel King? And Counsel Roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, to begin by saying, you know, for me, this is really about stewardship. Um, you know, and, and the city, this council, and our citizens trying to be good stewards, um, as we stand and moving forward. And I think, as you heard earlier, um, the city has made some efforts in this regard over the years, and certainly, um, uh, something that's on our, our radar. Um, I'll preface by what I'm saying, what I'm saying by, by stating, I, I personally by no means pretend to be an expert in this area. It's an area of interest to me, an area that I continue to learn about, um, and I'm open to that. I think that we as a city, um, should listen to the input. I think what I heard tonight, um, was that folks want to quicken perhaps, um, our target goals by five years. Um, they want us to be more, uh, aggressive in our planning. And all of that sort of dialogue and that pressure on the city is necessary, and I think we should be open to it. Um, you know, this plan is about vision, it's about goals, um, but it's, it's a living document. And, you know, we know that, and my idea of this whole thing, when, when reason for it, I couldn't read through all of it in detail, um, is that this is something that we can, we can, um, be changing and challenging, um, as we move forward. And it sounds like there's some challenge for change from our citizenry. Um, that being said, um, I do have a quick question through the chair with regards to, um, the administration's plan for Department of Sustainability and Resilience. Um, and again, I apologize if I overlooked that in the plan, because I only do so much. Um, if you could give us some specifics around that, um, would be helpful for me.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, as we are in the early stages of formulating the twenty-two budget, um, you know, that is an area that I'm really looking to, uh, probably include in my recommendations to the council with the twenty-two budget. Uh, the Office of, uh, Energy Asset Management really is two buckets of responsibilities, if you will. One is all of our ESCO programs, uh, aggregation, uh, all of the work that we've done on the lights and the solar arrays, et cetera, that I mentioned, really, it's Mr. Odell's office that has really handled. All of those very complex, detailed, uh, processes of bidding those out, getting the work done, following up on the work, and making sure those things came online. He's also responsible for the management of many of our city buildings. DCU, Union Station, all of the libraries, City Hall, Mead Street. Um, and as you all know, almost every one of those buildings that I just mentioned have major capital projects going on, uh, every year. Uh, Mr. Odell's office is also doing all of the installation across all city buildings and school buildings of the, um, ionization units and new filters as we try to make our buildings safer, uh, during this time of COVID. So all of that work is happening there. So there's a phenomenal amount of responsibility there. And now if we move forward with the Green Worcester Plan, we wanna make real our commitments in that plan. And so one of the things that I'm gonna be recommending to the council is kind of bifurcating that office, so we would have an Office of Sustainability, uh, that would be responsible for all of the ESCO projects that he's currently responsible for. But in addition, the implementation of the Green Worcester Plan, and we're looking at some other city functions that might more logically fit in the Office of Sustainability than perhaps in another city department. Uh, and then we would create what Worcester once had, which is a, an Office of, uh, Building Management, uh, that would be responsible for the capital repairs that are al- always going on in our city buildings, as well as all of the issues around cleaning the buildings and maintaining the buildings and the other responsibilities, uh, that fall under, uh, Mr. Odell. I think that way, we can further prove how serious and sincere and committed we are as a city to make this plan a reality, that we will have an entire staff, uh, that is dedicated to those responsibilities. And I think that will put us in a leadership role, quite frankly, as a city. We not only would have a plan, but we would have a team of very dedicated, knowledgeable professionals to implement that day in and out, and stay on top, uh, of the technologies and the latest developments and the latest opportunities, uh, to execute on that plan. So, more to come, uh, with my budget submission to the council, but that's my current thinking and, and, uh, my plans to include in the budget recommendation.
Thank you, Counsel King?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the administration's, um, explanation of that, um, and I certainly support the bifurcation, um, of the current department. And I understand that there's some budgetary, um, needs perhaps that we'll be looking at moving forward. Um, and, you know, we are certainly have a lot of competing priorities in this city. And, um, you know, I'm hoping that the, that when we, we bifurcate, that we're really doing it to the extent practicable, where we can have reform without revenue in this regard, if we're actually dividing and separating, um, some of the responsibilities, um, versus augmenting it. Um, I certainly would support augmenting it, but I, I'm just gonna need some, some information that supports that. Um, in addition to that, um, you know, I, I, I have, I think it's very clear, you know, from the folks that called in, they're looking for some more ambitious, ambitiousness around this. I, I, I also, um, have questions that Counsel Wally and Calorio posed with regards to, um, how this would impact us fiscally, what, what sort of, um, cost this is gonna cost, that it's gonna require. But at the same time, um, through the chair, through the administration, is it, um, reasonable to, to expect at this point in time that we have an overall cost estimate, given the fact that there's so many different, um, areas that we are moving forward in and could move forward in, we're, and, you know, and, and certainly the timeframe? Um, you know, just my, kinda just thinking off the top of my head, um, I'm wondering if, if, um, you know, those numbers, um, would most likely be, um, more accurate for things that we're planning to implement in the short term versus the long term, given the fact that you talked about how resources and, um, I think Mr. Odell talked about how resources and technology changes. Um, so, I guess the question is, what's the best way for us to receive those sorts of numbers?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Manager? And you're into your second five minutes, Counsel King. Mr. Manager?
I'm gonna let Mr. Odell take the first shot at that.
Sure, through the chair, um, thank you. It's a good question. It's, um, so, you're right to start with, is that the, um, uh, the plan is not prescriptive, intentionally so. We don't know exactly what projects will be coming forth of that, because that's not really what this plan is about. The plan is basically to set some goals that we think are realistic and are implemented, that we can implement based with the resources we have and the technology we have. But also is something that, um, uh, the, the specifics have not yet been defined. So, so to answer your question about what exactly the dollar cost will be is something that I, I can't answer right now. It will depend in large part about, as just the manager mentioned, about what resources we have available, both in terms of, uh, dollars available from outside sources and internal sources, but also in terms of what manpower we have available as well. Uh, people power, I should say, to be more accurate. So, based on that, we are, um, uh, I would defer any future questions to, uh, 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 the committee that's coming up in a, in a, hopefully in the near future through the, um, the Technology and, uh, Innovation Committee.
Thank you, and, and, um, I appreciate that response. Um, you know, I just don't want, Mr. Chairman, um, if we get this large number for it to be, um, sort of, some sort of scare tactic, um, for folks, um, who may be on the fence about this. This is, this is real. This is gonna have an impact on us now and on our future. Uh, so, you know, I just hope that there's a way to reflect that while reporting back the numbers. And lastly, um, again, in the interest of, of folks wanting more ambition, I would like to make a motion, um, requesting that the admin- administration look to see where, if anywhere, we can quicken targets, um, by at least five years. Um, if there's one or two or three or seventy areas that we can do that, uh, maybe a second look. Um, and I know this is gonna come up in, uh, committee. Perhaps that information could be provided by that committee, um, over the next coming weeks and days. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel King. Okay, who was Counsel Roll? I think you, you were next.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, most of the questions that I had, had been, um, answered, uh, by Mr. Odell and, uh, the city manager. I had questions about new construction that the manager, uh, referenced, and costs, and, uh, other, uh, questions that had already been, uh, asked and answered, so. and other questions that had already been asked and answered. So I'm okay. I do appreciate the people calling in and their passion and their energy. And I, I hope they bring that same passion and energy to the Urban Innovation and Technology Committee meeting so that we can certainly hear, you know, their requests and their suggestions on how we can move forward as part of this plan. I think it has the potential to be a wonderful collaboration. So thank you. And thank you to Mr. Odell and the administration for putting this report forward and for reinforcing some of the things that we've already done in the past that led us to this place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I see no one else. I'm sorry, Council Rivera, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the administration for the report and everyone who worked on it. Like Council King mentioned, I'm no expert. I brought forth the Climate Crisis Resolution last year and have learned so much by so many people in the community. My time in council really has brought me to a different appreciation. I also feel, I appreciate everything that this administration has been doing. And I think that one of the things I think is really important that was said tonight, that it is a living plan, right? It's still work. And I think anytime we bring forth a plan, there's always room for improvement. But we're definitely not where we used to be, which is great. We may not be where we want to be, but we're definitely not where we used to be. And how great it is to be able to, be able to hear accolades and critiques, but we have a plan. And that's great. The fact that we have something like this, this type of document and the type of work that we, that has already been happening has been great. And that's what I think is really important. Just the fact that we have a new subcommittee is great. That the administration is investing on staffing for this. It really shows that there's a level of commitment. Yeah, there's definitely some concerns I have regarding equity. But, but, but I also can see the fact that, like the manager stated, this is, it's still in, this is still in the work. And I'm just, you know, being on this council now, on my first term, to be able to have a document like this, to be able to know that there is a plan, that there's this work, that there's a level of commitment that I see this administration have and this council is a breath of fresh air. I'm no expert, but it's been a point of interest for me for a number of years and have been working on environmental issues here, but internationally. And just have learned so much, like I said, from other people. So I encourage folks to be able to come to the subcommittee. You know, I think that as a council and as an administration, we welcome the challenges. Not only do we welcome the accolades, we welcome the constructive criticism to be able to say, oh yeah, we might have missed this or yeah, we could do here or this is, this is something that we can realistically do. Then other things that we say, can we realistically do this or that? But that's why we have these great subcommittees. And you have a good team in that subcommittee to be able to have a really open dialogue and discussion. So I myself felt really great to be able to look at this report, look through it and be able to be excited about that we're, like I said, we may not be where we want to be. We're definitely not where we used to be. And I really appreciate all the hard work that's come into this. And I look forward to all the callers and so many people that are working on this issue that I've learned from that are going to be involved. Because I think this could only be effective if it's a strong community effort. All inclusive community voices come together for this to move forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, Council Rivera. Council Rosen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I read much of the Green Worcester Plan with interest, but especially the transportation section and how important transportation will be over the next few decades here in the city of Worcester. I especially was interested and concerned with one of my favorite topics, the W R T A and how it's important that that transportation system build and grow over the next few years and become much more efficient in many ways with routes and, and safety measures and, you know, certainly, you know, energy concerns. And how important, even mentioning that how important it was to increase our ridership in representing the city administration, my colleagues in the council and all the people in the city of Worcester during the past year as our, as our representative on the W R T A Advisory Board. I've been pushing that and pushing that, trying to increase the ridership. Sure, I'm pushing for a zero fare, at least a temporary one, an extension of what we have now. But even for years down the road, I want to see the ridership increase. Every time I see a bus going up and down Main Drags of Worcester, it's pretty much empty. And there's a heck of a lot of them. There's too many of them. I say, boy, it would cost us the same amount of money to run the buses up and down the same streets if we had people on them. It wouldn't cost us anymore. So I'm glad the W R T A has mentioned. I'm glad the W R T A is important to the Green Worcester Plan. As long as I'm around working, you know, for the city, for the administration, for my colleagues as the representative on the advisory board, I'll keep strengthening that. Not only do we need to get more people on the buses, we need to get people who have other means of transportation to use the buses. If we can do that, mass transportation someday and leave a lot of these cars at home. In fact, decades down the road, a lot of people won't own two, three or four cars per family. So transportation is just a part of this plan, but it's an important part. And I look forward to working with all my colleagues in our subcommittee to make sure that the W R T A shapes up, it reads this plan. I'm going to make sure that my colleagues on the advisory board, the W R T A, have access to this and they read at least the transportation section. And they know how important the work that we must do, all of us together over the next few years, is so important to our city, to all the membership cities of the W R T A. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Rosen. Council Russell?
Mr. Chairman, I want to just chime in if I may and congratulate Mr. Odell and the manager for their efforts. I see this plan as a great step in the, in the right direction. I see it as a path to the future. I don't see it as a roadblock in any way. I think it's some, it's just where we should be going. I will say that I was concerned a little bit when I, I heard the manager talk about electric heat and Doherty High School. So I would ask for a report telling us the details of that. Because I, I know from my own personal experiences in the, in the real estate business, electric heat right now is a very expensive alternative for folks. And it's something that, that affects, you know, I don't know what, what we're doing to the planet when we're using electric versus using gas. But, but I do know what we're doing in people's pocketbooks. And I'm hoping that on a short-term basis, that even on a long-term basis, it might be the right way to go. But on a short-term basis, that the taxpayers are well-served. If the manager wants to respond to that, that's great. If he wants to provide a report later on. But I'd just be interested in some details on, on the plans for electric heat for, for any of the new construction we have going here.
Okay, I'll get a report. Mr. Manager, are you going to address it?
No, we're happy to give a report so we can give a kind of detailed analysis. But it's something we spent a fair amount of time on with Mr. Odell and his office, looking at, not just today, but we're expecting Doherty High School to serve us for 30, 40-plus years. The current Doherty High School serves almost 60 years. So that's the kind of horizon that we're looking at. And where should we position ourselves when we build, you know, options within the systems right now for the future or where we are in this moment? You know, we can give a thoughtful analysis of why maybe we made the decisions that we did.
Mr. Chairman, maybe that report also, unless the manager knows this, or Mr. Odell knows this off the top of their head. But how about the other facility, the other schools that we just recently built or were in the process of being built? And even Polar Park was, did we use electric at Polar Park and at these other facilities? South High, you know, the other grammar school that we just got done building?
Mr. Manager?
I don't know if Mr. Odell knows. I know what, I don't think that we have at Nelson Place or South High School. But as I mentioned earlier, we have invested both at the construction time and then now subsequently added solar arrays. So Nelson Place is a net-zero school. So for 40 years, it is going to be a net-zero school. That is a big deal, not only to the environment, but to the taxpayers, given the size of that school and the ability to keep it air-conditioned and heated and use it around the, through the very seasons and have a net-zero building. So those are the kind of benefits that both the taxpayer and the climate get. I don't know if Mr. Odell wants to jump in on that or?
I know through the Chair, that's exactly right. I would say that we can give a more detailed summary for you at the, at the subcommittee level. But just to reiterate what the manager said, is that while some of these newer buildings were brought on board without putting in electricity, the heat pumps, which is what we're talking about, electric heat pumps, the technology for that was, had only just become relatively par in terms of cost and capability with gas. Those were, those buildings, of course, Nelson Place was built several years ago. South High is, was designed several years ago and in the process of being built. Current technology, however, the, we have reached the tipping point, if you will. And whereas electric heat pump technology, both ground, from air source, which is the most cost-effective way to install, as well as through ground source, has become far more efficient to operate than electric, even than gas, rather, even now. And by the time Doherty is built, that will be even more so as technology improves. So I'll, we'll give you more of the details shortly. But the short answer is we can, we are looking at both the near term and the long term when we make these suggestions, recommendations.
Mr. Manager?
I, I just want to say that that's a great kind of example of what we're talking about with the plan. Three schools built within or in plan within a six, seven-year timeframe. And we're using new technologies in the third school within that short timeframe. Because technology is constantly adapting and changing and improving. And we are taking advantage of those newest technologies and those newest opportunities as they become available. And that's the nature of this space. There's a lot of effort. And I think with the new administration in Washington, it's clear they're going to put a lot of effort into expediting the development of those kind of technologies, of the incentives to create those kind of opportunities. And so as those roll out, the plan can be adopted and changed to take advantage of those and perhaps expedite the dates and the goals that we have. We have the information available to us now. That's the plan that's recommended. This is an example of how things are changing very rapidly. And we should be ready to take advantage of those changes when possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, again, just want to reiterate a good job on bringing this item forward and getting the ball rolling. And I think it's a great, great path forward.
Okay, okay, Council King, for a second time, we have about four minutes left.
I'll say less than that, I promise, Mr. Chairman. This is just a comment to the administration and to, to, to the chairman. You know, again, I'm not a, I'm not an expert on this. But a lot of what I know have come from young people. They come from our youth. This issue of climate change and being more resilient and sustainable in our efforts as a country and as a city and as a state is something that I've learned from the youth. And in looking at the advisory committee component, I'm just wondering, and it's not a question, I'm making the form of a motion, is there a way to engage our youth in this specifically? And, you know, when I say youth, that could go up to age 25. But I'm also talking about the folks under 18, who may not be voters or what have you, but are invested in this, this process. We know that across the United States, there's a number of youth leaders that have been doing that. Would love to see some sort of a youth climate action team here in the city of Worcester, Mr. Chairman. You know, and I know the administration does great work with Rec Worcester. And perhaps that's an avenue by which to achieve such participation. So my motion would be that we explore something to that effect, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we need to go, we'll call on the motions. I just want to say, Mr. Odell and the working group, thank you. You spent a long time, you can tell, that report, will agree or disagree. They, you know, a lot of good, hey, a lot of good comments made tonight. And try, or try and make a better plan. It'd be great to have a committee with the Council. And the spirit of the committee to, it's important. And as I just said, it's a looking document. And I think a lot of good ideas are going to come out of this. So I'm glad we put that new committee into place. I think good focus on this, climate change. I think there's not one, yeah, that doesn't understand that climate is an issue and that we need to address it and we have to address that to the community together. So, Mr. Odell, your whole working group, thank you very much. Much appreciated, yeah. First, I'm going to take a motion to send that to the committee. And also, also I think was, Council King, Council Russell, that's the motions and a roll call.
Council Bridgman?
Yes.
Council Calorio?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Merrell Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Who am I?
Yes.
Council Wally? Mayor Cuddy?
Yes. Going to take this back to the agenda of 11. We're going to do the audits. Okay, first order is to request the mayor to review the timeline for distribution of COVID-19 vaccine in the city and the location of the distribution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, things have been changing pretty rapidly here with the, you know, state announcing different regulations and different criterias for the vaccination. So I know on February 1st, the elderly, 75 and older are eligible to get their vaccine. So I've heard from so many elderly people and they are scared, they're confused, they don't know where to go. They don't understand how to use a website, how to get online. So my questions to the city manager, if he can answer these please tonight, I would appreciate. How do the over 75 elderly get an appointment? Who do they call? What is the number to call? Where do they go? And if they can't leave their home, will someone come and help them? Will there be services to come to their house? Will there be a bus service? I think right now, we have to do everything we can to make sure our elderly feel safe and secure. They've been in their house for almost, what, nine months now? They've lost, we've talked about how their engagement at the senior center, they've lost their connections. They haven't been able to see their children, their grandchildren. And they are just waiting on bated breath for this vaccine. So I, my question tonight is, city manager, please, can you give us concrete direction here for our elderly? Where do they go? What is going to be the, I know you're looking for a mass distribution center you're going to go look at, I think it's Thursday or whatever. But where do they go? Who do they call? I know tomorrow they can start calling to get their appointment. What is that number? And can you give us some direction here, please? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
So obviously, all of this is really driven from the Commonwealth, right? The governor has laid out what the priority phasing of access to the vaccine. And then the state is also responsible for releasing the vaccines to the different providers. So the city of Worcester, we were one of the first sites that, as a municipality, we set it up at the senior center. And we have done for the city and for our alliance towns, the six towns we provide the public health services to. We've done all of our first responders who wanted the vaccine in that initial phase. We've done most of the home healthcare providers in the community who are going into our seniors' homes, whether helping with chores or other visiting nurses. We did a lot of them at those locations. We have been aggressively advocating with the state for a super site here in the city of Worcester. I want that so desperately because we're going to need that as we go into these larger cohorts of folks in the upcoming phase. these larger cohorts of folks in the upcoming phases. When we get to essential workers, et cetera, there are going to be so many people that we are going to need massive sites. So we have identified a site, the state was here actually today. Work, working with some of our clinical providers, I've been on the phone with the CEOs of St. Vincent's and UMass, finding out who could help operate that, because we're hoping to be able to do about 4,000 shots at that super site per day. Uh, those are the kind of numbers we need to be getting to. And everything, of course, that we talk about is double. Uh, because every shot needs to be followed up either three or four weeks later, depending on a Pfizer or Moderna vaccine with the second shot. So that's a lot of work, a lot of logistics in order to get this up and running. Right now, we are at the mercy of the state, again, deciding when the categories go and deciding who they're going to give the vaccine to, to provide that. Uh, my understanding is, in talking with the state, that later this week, they are planning a major communications outreach plan to give those answers to our seniors. Starting Monday, folks 75 and above are the next cohort of folks who are eligible. There are going to be multiple options available to them. There will be CVSs, Walgreens, Walmarts, some of the places that typically give everything from the seasonal flu vaccine to other vaccines, those are going to be available. Many of our hospitals and doctors' practices are also going to be offering those. But I can't say exactly all the ones that are going to have access. I know UMass is going to have Mercantile Center. So if somebody's primary care physician is affiliated with UMass, they're going to have the option to go to Mercantile Center if they're 75 and above and get their vaccine there. So again, this is still being flushed out. I realize everybody wants to know yesterday. But we are only, we're at the mercy of the state, providing us information as they develop it and who is being given the vaccine for which cohorts of individuals. So more to come on this. Uh, we certainly are doing everything we can. And I do have to give a shout out. Our public health staff have worked round the clock, day and night, seven days a week, actually delivering shots, training volunteers, medical students. Dr. Castile has been going out to homeless shelters with medical students, giving them and the workers at those facilities vaccines. Uh, we've gotten 75% of our police and fire department covered. And, you know, we're ready for when we get to the subsequent phases and we are able to do our teachers. We're all desperate to get our teachers and all of the support staff in the Worcester Public Schools vaccinated the minute that they're eligible, so we can get the schools back open again. Uh, our DPW, our sanitation workers, all of those folks, trying to figure out all these cohorts of folks, how to efficiently and quickly figure out, the way I organize it in my head, the super site will be generally available to folks and will be, be not just Worcester, but the greater central mass area. But the senior center will be kind of the express lane, if you will, for some of these other categories of folks like our teachers, like our employees, like we've done with our police and fire, as well as for our town partners. So, uh, I can't give you the phone number right now and I can't give you the dates because the state hasn't, hasn't given us that. Uh, but it is our understanding that the state is within the next day or two going to roll that out. But we are doing everything on the local level to be ready when the state says, here's the vaccines, go. We will have a super site identified with a clinical partner locally who can administer up to those 4,000 vaccines a day, in addition to what we're currently doing at the senior center. And we have also talked about more mobile capacities. I've talked to Eric Dixon at UMass about using their Care Mobile to be able to go on the road and particularly looking at places like our senior high rises and senior living facilities. It gets a little complicated because you may have folks who are 72 or 74 who will not be eligible. Uh, and that makes it a little complicated saying, sorry, you can't have one, but you can have one. But we are looking and recognizing the fact that there are a number of folks who are not mobile, who are not, you know, don't have access to the internet and have the need to have these services brought to them. And we are trying to figure out a system to, to provide that.
Thank you. Now, so what I'm hearing through the chair to the city manager is that if you're a senior and you're concerned and you're frightened and you don't know where to go, one of the first things you could do is you could call your doctor's office and ask, will they have the vaccine available if they're part of a, of a group? Which that is really positive. The other thing is, if you're a senior, you may want to call your, your local CVS or Walgreens and find out if they will also have the vaccine there to supply with you. Um, I'm very happy to hear that we'll have some kind of a mobile sort of unit going throughout the city to address our seniors' needs. I know we have a lot of shut-ins and that to me is very, very encouraging. So, I mean, stay tuned. I'm, we'll hear more news from the state within the next couple of days and hopefully we'll hear something from you, Mr. Manager, on that mass vaccination site. So we can help get our seniors and then the next group will be 65 plus with, uh, and as we go down the list to the general population in April. But, um, as you know, I know people in Worcester that were healthcare workers that could not get an appointment with the senior center, had to go to Southbridge or Southborough. I can't remember which one. So people haven't even been able to access the senior center in Worcester if they're a resident of Worcester. So I know that if we do a mass vaccination site, that if, the Worcester people are going to be mixed in with everybody else throughout the whole, you know, the state, whoever can access it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would just say that we only get, the reason, some of the reason that the access of the senior center is limited is because they only give us a certain number of vaccines. And so we can only book in the number of appointments that we can actually, you know, fulfill with the supply of vaccines that we have. So they're kind of rationed and each week we have to order more and it's capped at how much. And going in next week, we will only have 975 vaccines that will be available to us for the senior center site. So healthcare workers by and large should be getting their shots through the medical institutions, the St. Vincent's, uh, the, uh, UMass systems, the Reliance Systems, et cetera. There are some cohorts of folks like the home health aides that we pitched in and handled in addition to the first responders and some of those other smaller categories. So we want to do as much as we can, but we can only do as much as we have access to vaccine to do.
Counselor Corey, you have your second five minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thanks.
You all set?
I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counsel King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a great order, timely order. I've heard the same questions asked. Folks looking for ways to, to get information, folks looking for shuttle service, et cetera. Just a, a clarification question to the manager. In regards to the super site, where are we at in the process of the ask? And I know you said that there's a number of things that you are doing in preparation for that potentiality, um, within the private sector of the hospitals or what have you. But do we have the bandwidth, um, as municipality to manage a super site, as you called it?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, we wouldn't manage it. We would support it. That's why we brought in a clinical partner who would manage the site. So a Commonwealth medicine, which is an arm of the UMass Medical School, which does a lot of their kind of outreach, they do all flu clinics and other things. They have access to the medical students and all the professionals in the UMass system. They, as well as one of our hospital providers, would actually do the vaccinations, the observation that's necessary, the registration of the sites for the super site. And we've identified the location, the state came in and looked at it. Uh, we're just waiting for them to say when, uh, they could provide enough vaccine to have it staffed up and running. Uh, so we're hoping to get an answer on that in the next couple of days when we can, we'll shoot for having that online. We are managing the senior center site as well as some of the mobile stuff that we've been doing in terms of the shelters and some of the most vulnerable populations in the community. We've also talked, uh, to one of our other healthcare providers about when the DCU field hospital is ultimately decommissioned, is there an opportunity there to do another super site? Uh, I don't know whether the state would have enough vaccine or willingness to do it, but I want to be ahead of the game and say, if I've got a site and I've got another medical partner, will you give me a second, uh, super site, uh, in Worcester? Because we know, as Counselor Calorio mentioned, uh, we're not going to just get the people from Worcester. We're going to get the people from central Massachusetts and we're going to get the people from beyond. If they think the quickest appointment is in Worcester, they will drive a significant distance to come here. So, uh, we want as wide a funnel as possible so that when a cohort of folks in this community get called, uh, there's access, there's availability to this vaccine. There's not some big waiting line or some impossible system to try to get an appointment. Uh, and so we're doing everything we can with our local medical partners and the state to say, give us as much capacity as possible. We'll put the partnerships, we'll put the locations together. You just give us the vaccine.
Thank, thank you, uh, thank you, um, to the chair. You know, it sounds like a lot of logistics and things of that nature. We'll be, um, working and collaborating with folks. Um, and so I appreciate that. I'm just wondering through the chair to the administration, what involvement to this point in the planning as relates to the super sites and getting folks to where they can be vaccinated? As you've heard, the concerns about the shuttles and not, no transportation, things of that nature. Has there been any dialogue with the Worcester Together Group? And also, um, I know that there's funds there, Worcester Together COVID funds. Do we have any idea how much money they have? And they've been a great partner. Just wondering if you've already begun that dialogue? And do we have an idea how much money is in that fund?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, the fund, so there were two components to the fund. There was the kind of emergency need fund, uh, that was more than $10 million. That, most of that has been spent. That went for everything from food insecurity issues to, uh, you know, basic emergency needs for the community. That, that fund is pretty much depleted. There was a million dollars that was put aside in that fund that was really designed to help some of the not-for-profit cultural institutions, kind of reimagine how they're going to position themselves to come back, uh, in this new kind of post-COVID world. You know, we know so many of them, our theaters, our performing arts places are hanging on a string. They haven't had any income for going on a year and it could be many more months before they do. And the last thing we all want is those to close, uh, and people to be out of work and all of the energy that they bring to the community. So they put aside money to help those institutions find new ways to partner and new ways to kind of develop themselves. So that's primarily where those, their dollars have gone. They've been, you know, we're working with the Health Foundation, trying to do messaging for particularly communities that we know are a little bit more resistant to getting the vaccines, uh, trying to get the word out. So not only are we trying to build a system to access the vaccine, but we're trying to make sure that we're providing as much information to folks from influencers, not just city government and kind of institutions, but from kind of, uh, folks within communities that may be kind of persuaders, influencers, if you will, to help get people the information they need to say, yeah, I'm going to get this vaccine. This makes sense for me, my family, for, for my community. So I would tell you that this is 10 full-time jobs, just all of the things related to this. Because, of course, we still are testing around COVID. We still are helping with the field hospital. We are still responding to COVID while we try to build an entire new system to vaccinate folks. And do all of the other responsibilities. So, you know, we've got our emergency management folks, a lot of folks from my office. We've been doing town hall meetings with all the media outlets. We did one on WCRN the other morning. We're doing one, uh, this week with the Telegram. Uh, we're doing one with La Mega. We're doing any place that will take us. We are going and trying to talk about why to get the vaccine, how to find out how to get the vaccine, as well as trying to provide those opportunities to access it. So it really is a lot of work that I don't know that the average person sees or knows is going on. But if you talk to the employees up at the senior center, you can see just the exhaustion. A lot of these folks have not had a day off in 10 plus months, um, trying to keep the community safe. So, um, I know the council knows, but I, I want them to hear from me how much we appreciate all they're doing day in and day out, uh, trying to get us prepared for the vaccine.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Counsel King.
Thank you. Um, a lot of amazing work going on out there by the administration, by your staff, by our, um, partners, um, in the private sector as well. You know, we just really want to encourage, um, you know, folks that when we're, we're doing that work, that we're cognizant of, you know, some of the, the barriers that Counselor Calorio mentioned, um, as relates to getting to the vaccine. And I know you're very much forward-thinking that way. You know, as I sit here, I'm wondering, you know, if the United Way is somehow could maybe partner uh, with us around some of those transportation issues. But really, you know, um, just appreciate the order. This is something that's, that's really, um, been coming to me over the last few days with the 75 and over, um, availability. And also I think, um, you know, the 65 and over is coming shortly after that. Um, and my last comment will be, um, I really hope that we're also able to get the vaccine out to our essential workers. Um, some of our essential workers who are non-essential. Um, and be it the folks in the grocery store, uh, be it the folks at Dunkin' Donuts counters, gas stations, et cetera, uh, who also haven't had a day off. You know, we want to make sure that those folks are taken care of too. And I know that's always on the conscience of this council, this administration and our mayor. So thank you for the good work.
Thank you, Counsel King. Counsel Rivera?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, this is a great order. We actually had a whole conversation on this in our public health meeting, um, today at 5:00. There's a lot of conversation. There's a lot of great work. I talked about the, you know, our administration, um, the forward-thinking, how, I think how the city manager mentions, um, the phrase, um, flying the plane at the same time we're building it. It was a debate whether it was a plane or a ship, I'm not too sure. Either way, it's a moving device. And with all of that, um, the work that there, that's being done, our public health, uh, department, which is like just beyond amazing. I was on a, the equity call this morning. There is a lot of concern regarding the rollout of the vaccine as we move forward. You know, a lot of talk about communication, a lot of conversation about equity. So I just want to say, you know, the amount of work that is being put in by this administration and this community has been, has been amazing. And definitely it's, it's very timely. I know that people are very concerned. So I think for many of us too, that have people that follow us or work, you know, or look to us for a stay in communication, the Worcester Together continues to work very aggressively and there's, um, just continue to get informed. We're going to be having some really good chairman orders. I really appreciate my committee members, um, Counsel Rosen and Counsel Russell. And I think there's, there's a lot of really good work happening and so much more that we have to do. And we're just, you know, during this COVID, I've been really proud of this community. And I think during this, um, distribution of vaccine, I, I, you know, I agree with what, you know, Counsel Calorio said, you know, so many people have so many questions and there's concerns and, um, although there's many that are hesitant because they're fearful, but there's so many people that are anxiously waiting for this vaccine. So, um, I think it's, there's, for us to continue to stay informed um, so we can get the information out there and just know that there's so many moving parts um, that are happening, uh, day in and day out. And I think it's going to be really important for us to also advocate with our state delegation and the state department because we're still, um, I'm concerned about the way that the vaccine will be rolled out if we are considered yellow and not red. And this goes back to, um, Mr. Chairman, the letter that we sent out over to the public health division at the state. We sent out over to the Public Health Division at the state level. That now the school comes back in session for the semester that we, if we go back in yellow. This might affect, you know, the rollout of the vaccine and what resources we get, so I think at some point. You'll see some of the chairman order that are coming in next week, but we really have to continue to kind of push the state. How we go about doing some of this and how we also get seen and affected if we do not modify. If we do not adjust the data according to what we needed to adjust and that we actually can be seen as red and not yellow. And that's from the discussion of how we're viewed because of the test scores that are coming in from college. Because that will affect, I think, some of the rollout, but again, I just wanted to just put in that. Just thank the administration and the hard work of the public health that is doing some really great work and the community.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera. Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up, is the state, you think, planning the distribution of vaccines? As Counselor Rivera was saying, from red to yellow, you think that's a good idea?
Honestly, I have not heard that. I think they're trying to figure out which categories of folks. Are eligible for the access, like the seventy-five and above that's not next week. And that populations are across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and so they want as many, my understanding, they want as many sites as much access. Throughout the state that meet those needs and we get to progressively larger cohorts of folks. As was mentioned, the next one is essential work, not the next one, but a little further down is essential workers, that's a massive number of folks. Those are millions of folks here in Massachusetts, those are many of our employees. There are many of the food service workers, retail workers, et cetera. So the number of sites and vaccines that are going to need to be available to meet that need. And then probably in April or so, when it's general availability, when it's everybody else. You know, that is going to be a herculean task, so I think what they've been trying to do is ramp up. And it's been rocky, there's no doubt about it, it's been rocky, but I think each day and each week that goes by, we're building more capacity. And just in time for bigger cohort of folks who are going to need that additional capacity.
A couple of other things before I pass off to Counselor Rose and Russell.
I just wanted to be able to answer that question a little bit, so in the meeting, the equity that I had this morning. It hasn't really been determined per se, but they really do believe that. Resources will go to communities that they're detecting are in high need. So that is one of the concerns that the meeting we have with UMass and the equity that. That's one of the concerns that they're having right now, that data is not looked at properly.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is on transportation too, I know that. The Worcester Together Group, United Way and Gina, there is. They're working with Lyft, so people should wear that, Lyft has a national program to help transport people to get their vaccines and. Tim Garvin and his group is already on top of that, he's the Lyft company and so that's something that we can avoid, they do going forward. And I know that Mr. Manager and Dr. Hirsch are talking about the mobile vehicle, which you, I think you talked about that over a month ago, so. My point being that the Public Health Department, the manager and his team have been contemplating this for over three or four months, how they're going to distribute the vaccines. If not longer, and that's why I thank the Public Health Department, this team. A lot of those people have not taken a day off since March, so people should realize that. And he put in a lot of time beyond their scheduled time, your own, so I thank them, it means a lot to the city. Way out of your way, it's not going to be forgotten, so much appreciated to the public health. And emergency management and they're involved, which really, if the people is safer in the city of Worcester, so, Mr. Manager, I thank. And I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Rose and then Counselor Russell.
Mr. Chairman, you stole my thunder. I was, I was just going to just say that, you know, as the. Or it is that you want to call it, I just feel that we should be very thankful and lucky. To have the leadership that we do in the city addressing this public safety issue. You know, the deaths that we're seeing in this country are around COVID are comparable to like daily. Pearl Harbor or nine eleven or so on, I, I think that it's very significant and. I just want to thank the manager and he went on and shared his own. I want to thank, you know, Dr. Aaron Clark and so many others. Thinking and proactive of trying to dot every i and cross every t to ensure that everybody gets everything that they need, whether it's information, a vaccine. A test or whatever it may be and, and even Counselor Rivera and the Worcester Together team with Tim Garvin and. And the many stakeholders involved in that, like. I just want to reiterate and I don't want to assume that people don't get how privileged and lucky we are to have this type of leadership, but. We are tremendously lucky, you know, for, for all of us and. And to have this, this leadership team in public health on council, with Counselor Rivera's leadership and others. Being proactive and not reactive to things and I find that the state, based on the things that they have to do, they're very reactive to things yet. If only they could just let Worcester be in charge and we be in a better space or place, but. Just want to reiterate again, you know, how lucky we are to have the leadership that we do and. And all that they've done throughout this pandemic and as they'll continue to do. It's just really special to be a part of this very coordinated team with all those members and members of council. In addition to that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Rose, Counselor Russell.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor Rose, don't give this governor any ideas. Go around trying to steal our manager, trying to steal our staff, so don't give them any ideas. You know, I think that, you know, the, the problem that I have is as a district councillor, as a councillor in general. Is getting calls and not having the proper information. I got a call as recently as this afternoon from an elderly lady, an active person in the neighborhood who attends many. Of our neighborhood meetings, lives in a condo complex, and she asked me pretty much, you know, like, what do I do? And I didn't have the information that I have today, right now, after, after having this meeting and after taking part in the. Counselor Rivera's Health Committee Subcommittee Meeting a little bit before, that happened just before this meeting. I would suggest respectfully that, that the administration needs to send us a regular email almost every day. With updated information so that we can pass it along to the public. Because this information is changing so rapidly, I mean, this afternoon during that subcommittee meeting, I asked. Matty Castile, who's putting the needles in people's arms? Is it the City of Worcester staff, is it UMass staff, is it St. Vincent's staff, just who is it? You know, who's basically in charge? I remember back on January sixth, I was communicating via text with the manager about some logistics in the. Over the vaccination program and our response was, well, that's UMass and it probably was just for that section, but I took it. To mean that, that means UMass is in charge of everything, so I think that. Just from my own selfish standpoint, I'd like to get more information so that I'm able to pass it along. To people in the district, in the city that call me and ask for that information. Because I really don't feel as though I'm getting enough information to pass along, so I'll just leave it at that as a. Put it in the suggestion box, but I think it's something that we need to do. Mr. Chairman, during our subcommittee meeting, there was a, a woman, I believe she was from UMass that. Gave us a statistical report, you know, that dealt with racial breakdown, neighborhood breakdown. Where the COVID cases were real high. And, you know, it's, I just want to ask through you to the manager, Mr. Manager. Dealing with the, obviously, we, I don't think we can change the, the guidelines that the federal government and the state is giving us. For distribution of this vaccine, and I'm not looking to change those guidelines. But what are we doing to reach out specifically to the neighborhoods that are on the top of that list? To make sure that the people that meet the other criteria, but are in the areas that are so infected by. Who might not have access to the internet, might not have, might not even read the newspaper or listen to the radio and. And know what's going on, what are we doing to reach out to those specific areas?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the counselor, you know, there are a number of strategies that are being developed when we have information to reach out to them with. So as I mentioned before, we've got a grant with the Health Foundation that are going to be used to get primary care physicians, other influences. Particularly with cohorts of folks that we know are accessing the vaccine at lower rates than maybe other folks to try to. Talk peer-to-peer as to why it's important to do that, we've done meetings with the black families together. Where we brought all sorts of doctors, talked about the whole research protocols that went on. They talked about the historical, you know, atrocities that have happened to communities of color around. You know, medical research that has predisposed many of those communities to be skeptical about getting the vaccine, understanding the context. And then understanding how this is different and educating folks. Between Dr. Hirsch, Dr. Castile, myself, I can't even tell you how many media outlets we are on in a given week. I do three radio shows every week, we're doing town hall meetings with all of our media partners. Trying to get that message out, but we don't have at this stage all the information that the folks will need. Subsequently, as we get that, I mean, I was on the phone with Alex Coralex, for example, several times today. As we try to figure out how the, what's the housing authority and all of their tenants, many of whom are in those neighborhoods and in those zip codes that you're talking about. How we get them included, whether we send folks out there or how we best kind of make sure they access that, so. We really do want to get the word out to everybody because if we're going to get the full benefit as a community of the vaccine, we need to get in that. Seventy-five to eighty, eighty-five percent vaccination rate to get the herd immunity that we need. And that means we're going to have to get all of those harder to reach folks. I do believe that as the weeks turn into months and CVSs come online and Walgreens come online and doctors' offices come online. And the hospitals that may be affiliated with your doctors are providing vaccines, we have super sites, we have workplace sites. And we have our senior center, we are going to be able to have plenty of places to then reach out and say. Here's your ten options that you can go and make an appointment, or here's a van that we're going to bring to the neighborhood. Come on board, something similar to Libby or our bookmobiles, we're not there yet. But I think as we roll out and as the weather changes and we get to wider. Basically, anybody who wants the vaccine has the opportunity to do that, we can get a lot more aggressive with some of the outreach. And it'll be safer to do that, because we're still in the throes of a surge, so. You know, talks about getting buses filled with people, transporting, those have dangers too in the moment that we're in. Because putting people in those buses and transporting them, particularly older people, people who may have pre-existing conditions. That might not be the safest way to get them the vaccine, so we may have to be thinking about the other way. And the Lyft and the Uber options will allow folks to go to their primary care, have a conversation with their doctor, get reassured. Hey, say I'm taking these medications, that's a level of conversation that many of our seniors and many folks who've got medical conditions really need and want. That we can't give probably at these super sites, these super sites are roll up your sleeve, give you the vaccine and. When you ask the question, who's giving the vaccine, it's all of the people that you mentioned. Literally, it's maybe a medical student, maybe a Worcester public school nurse, they're helping us out at the senior center, it may be a retired doc who's. Volunteering a certain number of hours, we have pulled everybody from everywhere who can give a vaccination and. I volunteered to give yours, Counselor Russell, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just in closing, I would ask that the report that was presented tonight at the Public Health Committee. Is included in a communication from the manager to the whole council because I. I only saw it on the, the small iPad, you know, as it was being put on, it's like a slideshow, but. We're here, we're here nationally all the time, follow the science. And if we have these reports locally telling us where these problems are. And we have information from the clerk's office, age bracket, we could, we could tell you if we were knocking on doors for a political campaign. We could tell you where the seventy-five-year-old people are in Graper Valley or on Providence Street or in any specific neighborhood in the city. And I think we should be utilizing all the tools we have and more importantly, the science reports that we have at our disposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you can also just start in the second five, so good job. Okay, let's see, I think I wrapped it up, Counselor Rosen, get the stopwatch out.
It won't be that bad, Mr. Chairman. About an hour before tonight's council meeting, I've got an email from Relyant Medical over at the Greendale Mall, big operation, you know, my doctor's been. With Relyant for a few decades and they gave me the good news, said, hey, age seventy-six, Gary Rosen. You are eligible in a few days, February first, get in line, we're going to shoot you up. The trouble is, then the next thing said, that's the good news, the bad news is, we don't have any vaccines. So don't get in line and just wait and be patient and they're going to let us know, they're going to go through my chat and let us know. You know, when they have the vaccine and how they'll distribute it and so on, but that's the, the, the great thing in this country is that we have a vaccine. But a national tragedy, a national disgrace is we aren't able for some reason to make enough of it. We have a couple of companies, I guess Moderna and Pfizer always making it, I don't know, I guess the operation's twenty-four seven. Maybe the manager knows, through the chair to the manager, I'm just looking at how the City of Worcester eventually gets vaccine. I mean, the two companies produce it and where does it go to, a stockpile in? The, with the federal government and they look at the fifty states and maybe what party our governor belongs to when it comes to the state. And then when it gets to the state, how do they decide? Because you mentioned, you said something about nine hundred and seventy-five vaccines or something available, I think you said for so many figures going around. Next week at the senior center, we need so much more. I mean, we, I've heard some great stuff from my colleagues tonight, the mayor and especially the manager on all the things we're doing. We're ready, we're ready to go, but there's no vaccines, that's the problem. So how, who do we lobby, do we start with the federal government, do we go to Governor Baker? Who do we lobby to get the people in the city of Worcester these vaccines? Or do we just say, we got all the plans, but we'll wait for May, June, July and August? I just think that's a tragedy because a lot more people will be sick and dying of different variants and different strains, so. What do we do, can you give me like real quickly, real briefly, Mr. Manager, the process from the, from the labs to where, where does that go?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the federal government had contracted with some of the large. Pharmacist, pharmacy, the CVSs and Walgreens. And they have a federal contract to do certain categories of folks, including the long-term care facilities. So those were happening, so you know, the, you know, Jewish healthcare. They may have a relationship with CVS, they work directly with their CVS provider, CVS sent folks there. Inoculated the staff and the residents of that location, that was it. So they worked directly with that, that seemed to be a decent process.
They have to do it again, though, they have to do it a second time, come back to all these places, again, limited vaccine and do it all over again.
Right, when, my understanding is they've, they've made sure that there is the two doses. Amounts for the vaccines, they have not gotten into a situation like the UK chose to do. Which is just give everybody one vaccine, which gets you about eighty percent efficacy. And thinking that was a better strategy than the one that the US is doing, which is really the strategy that's based on what the trials were. They never really tried what the long-term impacts of this, the one vaccine, so they have enough to do too. So everybody who gets one should not be worried about being able to get the second one in either the twenty-one. in either the twenty-one days with the Pfizer or the twenty-eight days with the Moderna. The problem is, it is being rationed at this stage. That's why we only get, I would take thousands of vaccines at the senior center. I would run seven days a week, I would run twelve-hour days if I could find the staff, and I think I could find the staff. I just don't have enough vaccine to do it. My hope is that as the supply chain catches up with these sites that come online, we can expand those capabilities. And I think that's what the state is hoping. They've got vaccines that they're going to send into these mega sites, but there is also vaccines going to the UMasses, to the primary cares, the uh, pharmacies, so they are going to be part of the overall system. So, there's not going to be just one door for folks to go through. And that's really important because we could never handle the vol- volume of people if everybody had to come through one or two super sites. We need that kind of diverse set. But you're exactly right, uh, the federal government has not been able to provide states with enough vaccine in timely enough way without creating these crimps in the system, these, these uh, log jams in the system.
Through the chair, the manager, now that we know what's in the vaccine, at least the scientists and the researchers do, the companies that manufacture it, with the great, the brilliant minds of the scientists here in the city of Worcester, from our colleges to especially our biotechnology pack, could we manufacture the machine, the machine, the vaccine in the city of Worcester for our folks? Or is it limited to Pfizer and Moderna? They have the patent, they have the monopoly, and they can produce it, but only as fast as they can. Could we, why couldn't we do it here?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure what the capabilities to, you know, the type of manufacturing that goes on, say, in an ABV is substantially different than some of the vaccine production. I know that President Biden has recently, one of his early actions was use the, a Defense Production Act where he's basically federalized uh, some of these supply chains. So, I think that is one of the hopes, that to the extent that the federal government can go in there and force, you know, more and speedier distribution or take over other facilities and say, stop making the flu vaccine. You're now making, uh, you know, one of these uh, Moderna Pfizer vaccines. That hopefully will help speed up the uh, volume of, of supply.
Okay, I, I thank you, Mr. Manager. I thank you, Mayor and my colleagues for your patience. But again, that's the big problem is the fact that we lack enough doses of this vaccine. We need double right now until Johnson &amp; Johnson comes up with their single dose. People will really line up for that one. We need double the doses. We don't even have one-fourth the doses that we really need. We're going to need double, two for every person. So, you know, if it's part, I, I hope President Biden does require labs across the country, which should be easy for a lab to adapt, to follow this chemical recipe and, you know, make the vaccine. That's what we have to do. All hands on deck to make this vaccine, to distribute across America. Other countries can do it that way. We should be able to do it much better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Counselor Rosen. With that, we wrap it up on this item. Mr. Manager, good job tonight, uh. I thank you for bringing the attention, we had a good discussion. So, we're going to send that to, uh, Manager and the roll call.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Cororio?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Murkerson? Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Rosen?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Tumi?
Yes.
Counselor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, okay, we should still speak some of these items up here now. Eleven B requests a man to write counsel to report concerning notification process used to alert affected residents of lot of valve shut offs for repairs where they are planned or unplanned for requesting manager include this report information to offer. See, reverse nine-one-one service can be utilized for such purpose. Counselor Murkerson?
Mr. Chairman?
I, Counsel, Counselor's not here tonight, but uh, I think Counsel Rose, you have a similar item on?
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. Just wondering if we could take eleven B and eleven F together. This is kind of born out of, um, a spot in, uh, both Counsel Carlson and I's district where we kind of marry each other, um, and the suggestion came through a neighborhood meeting.
Okay, requesting a man to utilize reverse nine-one-one system, communicate with residents, uh, predicted water issues in the neighborhoods for their streets as means of alerting residents that may lose water or pressure. I think Counsel Carlson has that same thing, okay.
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, um, I think that, uh, when these, uh, water main breaks, um, the DPW, uh, in a really great way responds very quickly and then the communication follows after, um, whether it be on Twitter or social media, whatever it may be. Um, you know, we're just, uh, uh, came up in a neighborhood meeting from me. Um, just curious if there was a possibility of doing reverse nine-one-one to alert residents when this comes up, um, in a more, um, much quicker, uh, a manner, um, so that they're aware of water pressure, of lack of water, or whatever it may be. Uh, so that's where this was born out of, from my order, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman, you have a hit up? I thought I saw it. Counselor Bergman, you speaking to Amir Amu?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I thought I had done you, thank you. Uh, I, just a quick comment that was or is, that I remember a number of years ago, there was a big water main leak at Worcester State University right on Chalmers Street. And the reverse nine-one-one system did work and it did work quickly. So, I know we have the capability, I mean, that everybody in that neighborhood was notified. Everybody in that neighborhood was notified, uh, of the leak. So, I know the, the uh, technology is there. I know we have a new, uh, Commissioner of Public Works, so I certainly want to give him the opportunity to get caught up to some of these issues as well. But hopefully in the future, as Counsel Rose said, um, and I know Counsel Carlson as well, that, um, not reverse nine-one-one could be used to these issues. I also know the cost is a yearly fee. So, no matter how often we use it or how little we use it, we don't cost the taxpayers any additional money for using reverse nine-one-one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, so we'll send those to the manager, roll call.
Counselor Bergman? Yes. Counselor Cororio?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Murkerson? Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Rosen?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Tumi?
Yes.
Counselor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Hey, we're on C because the shortage of public, uh, restrooms for the homeless, especially during the pandemic, threats in public health request man to recommend steps that need to be taken, provide mobile portable or in-building tools in hand washing facilities, Counselor Rosen, Carlson, and Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've done so much to help the homeless here in the city of Worcester over the years. Done a lot, have a lot more to, to do, long way to go. But at least I think we've shown our concern as a city, as, uh, city council, as an administration. We've all shown our concern for the issues they face on a daily basis. And one of the issues they face is, like all of us, any of us, when you have to go to the bathroom, you have to go to the bathroom. It isn't like you can say, I'll go tomorrow, like to the supermarket. No, when you have to go, yeah, you have to go. And where do you go? Well, when I'm at home, I go at home, okay? When others, when you're at work, you go at work. Right now with COVID, that's about the only two places we are, right? Cause everything else is, is, you know, kind of closed, all the activities and events. But it's easy for us, but if you're homeless, if you're unsheltered and you don't have that, those places to go, and especially during the pandemic where you used to go maybe to Union Station. And I hear from people, Union Station bathrooms have been closed. They may be open some days and sometimes not always open, okay? The library they used to go to, um, they, they would go to certain restaurants that might be closed now, okay? But they, they, when they have to go, they go anywhere they are and that has been the problem. I was surprised how many people would support this order. I get a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, individuals, agencies, businesses who tell me, who were telling me, in fact, you heard it from the director of the Big Program downtown. And I talked to that person via email and will talk more extensively in the future. But the people downtown, the Big Program, they're very concerned. You heard the, the, the woman speak about that tonight. They're very concerned because it's a public health hazard. It's not good for the homeless folks to go anywhere they are when they have to go. The city certainly has to do something. Portland, Oregon has done a great job. They have a hundred of these hygiene stations, these facilities. Some of them I saw on the internet, they're not the standard porta potty, the small porta potty. No, they're big like trailers and you, they have attendants. Some cities have hired attendants. I know it's expensive, okay, it's expensive, but for public health, it's worth it. They have attendants who keep the, the facilities clean. Everyone seems to use them, it's not just the homeless. It's anyone who has to go, who's out and about, they use these facilities. And they have hand washing, washing stations too. When people go, whether it's in a porta potty or outside of some of our unfortunate folks are doing, they have to wash their hands, but they usually cannot. So, I would like the administration to look into the possibilities. What can we do to provide bathroom facilities to the less fortunate folks in the city who can't go at work, who can't go at home, who are out and about in our community throughout the day? I know it's a problem. I've talked to at least two or three of my colleagues in the council, especially district councils, and I've heard some of the areas that it's a problem. I've talked to business owners, I've talked to agencies, I've got calls from individuals and everyone says, you're right, you're right, okay? We do not want human waste on our streets, on our sidewalks, in our parks, our playgrounds, in the driveways to our businesses, anywhere there are people and where people have to go. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to help everyone, especially the homeless folks. So, I refer this to the administration, hope they can provide us with some information and a plan in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, we have Counsel Tumi for our, like Counsel King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I commend, uh, Counsel Rosen for, uh, requesting this. There's definitely a need, um, especially where so many other places are closed right now. Um, I know that I've gone to a number of, of, uh, places where bathrooms, uh, you know, in, in a, in a store, uh, have been closed to the public. So, um, I remember, uh, at one time in Boston, they tried out a, um, self-cleaning bathroom. Um, if you could get an update on that, um, and what other, um, uh, programs have been successful, uh, as opposed to those who haven't been, that would be great. Thank you, and I, thanks, uh, Counsel Rosen for filing this.
I know the manager and his team has been working on this with Counsel Rivera and big team, and it's a big issue. So, hopefully we can move this forward. Which is working, I think, a little bit, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. Just a couple of comments and a question relative to, um, what we have been doing. Um, I, I wanted to just say, you know, that this, this is a great order, this is amazing order. Um, you know, being out there as a social worker, you, you come across these issues um, almost on a daily basis. And, um, you know, it's my understanding that the city has been making some efforts this way. So, um, I would like an update on that in a moment from the administration. But before we get that, um, I just wanted to say that this, this issue here for me is really, um, an issue of dignity, dignity, basic hygiene dignity. Um, you know, and, and many folks will say that this is an actual civil right um, for these folks who are homeless. Um, so I, I'm really hoping, um, that we, we have some movement on this, um, no pun intended. Um, but really would like just to see us going forward. Um, in addition to that, you know, this also speaks to, um, on a wider scale, um, and I don't have any information that that's, that this is currently an issue in Worcester, but on a wider, broader scale, um, this lack of access to, um, public bathrooms for the homeless population has often resulted in marginalization, um, the criminalization of homeless folks, um, you know, that, that are ever-present in addition to, as we know, the health risks and concerns that are exacerbated by COVID. Um, so, and, and over the, the time that, that, you know, we've been out there and, and we hear things from the community, I, I did have information, not from the administration, but from people in the community, that this has been some dialogue. I know with Counsel, uh, Rivera, um, and the administration. So, through the chair, but we could just get an update on, um, kind of what, what the, the process has been like and the, the, the work and communication that's come to the administration in regards to this previously.
The manager?
Um, through the chair, you know, there have been a number of conversations that the Union Station bathrooms are open, the Salvation Army bathrooms are open, the, um, St. John's Food Pantry bathrooms are open. So, there are some facilities that are available. Uh, there's certainly not as many facilities as were available pre-COVID with the library being closed. City Hall is probably one of the most heavily-used bathrooms for, uh, folks who don't have other, uh, options to them. Uh, and because we've had City Hall closed to the public, that hasn't been an option. Uh, we've talked to folks about putting some of these, uh, portable bathrooms, uh, in locations. We've gotten strong pushback from some business owners who feel like that will create a magnet for folks who would then be drawn to the area around their business. Yes, it may take care of one problem, but they become concerned that it would be an attraction that would create other problems, uh, around there. So, the concept is good, like everything else that we do with the homeless, whether it be a shelter or whether it be a treatment facility, the citing of it becomes a very big challenge. Um, and so, you know, I'm happy to continue to talk to the bid and if certainly they have some of their businesses, uh, that are in the bid that would be willing to open their facilities, uh, to these folks, uh, that could be a very cost-effective strategy, uh, given the fact that they're existing bathrooms. Um, so, I'm open to the idea, uh, but again, it's like anything else. Uh, when you have the conversation, get into the specifics, you do find other people who have concerns and impacts, uh, that make it a little less easy to implement.
Thank you, um, you know, I, again, I'd like to sign on to this order. I appreciate the explanation, um, you know, and, and looking forward to what's done with the bid downtown. But this is certainly an issue, um, that goes beyond, um, uh, downtown Worcester, um, in that, that particular district. So, um, really looking forward to that and, um, I understand some of the concerns of businesses and perhaps others. But we also have the issue, as I mentioned, of, of, of basic, um, basic hygiene dignity, um, that we have to figure out concurrently, um, COVID and post-COVID. So, um, looking forward to, to see where we land with this. Um, and once again, very grateful for this order.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll send that to the manager, roll call.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Cororio?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Murkerson? Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Rosen?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Tumi?
Yes.
Counselor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, request the manager, request he is solicited by counsel to report identifying any Massachusetts law. City Council rules, quarters, etc., determine the limits on adding reports and expanding discussion of previously published agenda. And is that city council meetings, Counsel Bergman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The number of years I've been on the council, I think this, rule thirty-five, and I'll talk about that in a second. It's somewhat lax and, uh, but I think lately, um, seems to me that it's been not followed more than ever. And I think that's a particular problem, uh, in the era of the time of COVID where people rely on our agendas and need to focus on what we're actually saying in the agenda we're going to be talking about. Rule thirty-five, just for refresher for all of us, quickly, the first consideration of an order followed by a counselor, um, that's what it talks about. And it says, if the file of the item, file of the item should be recognized, okay? That's fine, we'd do that. If by the text of the item or by the intention of the fileer, it appeals, appears that the item is going to be referred to a standing committee or to the city manager, um, the, no other debate except to recognize that counselor who wishes to oppose the item, request clarification or amend the item, uh, should happen. So, what happens is, I, I've been following tonight, I, I'm guilty of it too. Every order that somebody proposes that's going to go to a subcommittee or go to the manager gets extensive dissection. Now, I'm not saying the discussion isn't worthwhile, of course it is. But I think the purpose of the rule is to give the manager of the subcommittee an opportunity to flush out some of the issues that can't be flushed out when the order's first filed. Now, if we want to as a body, uh, abandon rule thirty-five, I have no issue with that. I just have an issue with blatantly violating it almost every order we talk about. Um, you know, at times- You know, time is precious. We spent a lot of time on orders tonight that we really don't have a lot of information about as far as other people speaking other than the filers. I don't want to do this at the lawn party. I'm guilty of it as well as I think we all are. But I think we need some clarification on whether we should continue on that path, especially when items and orders and reports are asked that don't show up on the agenda. And I think at the time, at the time we're in now of COVID, it's particularly unfair to those that follow the agendas to have to wonder what we're talking about when it doesn't relate at all to the orders that were filed. So again, I'm as guilty of it as anybody. I'm not trying to throw my colleagues under the bus. I do it, we all do it. I just think it's appropriate time to take a good look at it. Again, maybe the rule should be abandoned. But if we're going to have the rule, I think we ought to get some guidance on whether or not we're following it. And particularly when we have people that rely more than ever on the agenda when they can't be at the council in person.
Okay, so now to Law Department, just to be clear a little bit on that order.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm speaking. We fought one hundred or four years ago when we enforced that rule, and the council didn't want to enforce it. I'm more than happy to do it. And that means, what it means is that you can't get up and speak on anybody else's item. You can't put yourself on the agenda to amend it. So we get clarification from the Law Department. But I think like tonight's discussion was pretty good on the nineteen, and people spoke about it, it was worthwhile. So I think there's a balance in there. We get a clarification. Counsel King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this particular one here, this order, I just had a question for clarification around, to the solicitor perhaps if he's on, around the enforcement. So I know this is a report back to the council. Just want some clarification on what that enforcement's supposed to look like.
I don't think he's on, is he on, Mr. Manager?
I was going to say, Mr. Train had a family engagement, but the assistant city solicitor, Ms. Beaton, is on. So if she wants to take it or if she wants to get back to the counselor, I'll defer to her.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is Jennifer. I think it would be best to come back to you with a report and make sure that we can look at all the issues and kind of examine it fully.
Thank you. You know, I will speak in opposition to this, just given the fact that I'm not clear as to, you know, where we're going with this. As was mentioned, the rules are very clear, you're speaking, as it relates to, you know, in opposition for clarification, et cetera. But this reads differently than that. Adding reports, expanding discussions, I don't know exactly what that means, you know, and I'm certainly open to learning more. But, you know, if this is something, a report back, just a report back on rule thirty-five, that'd be one thing. With the language here, I'm concerned, I'm also concerned, I'm not going to support anything that's about controlling a narrative. I'm not going to support anything that is in opposition to the chairman managing these meetings. I am well aware that if the chairman believes that there's something out of order, he can rule it so. And I'm also aware that the chairman, if we don't agree with his ruling, we can challenge that ruling. You know, and I don't want to undermine the authority of the chair. And for that reason, I will not be voting in support of this.
Okay, anybody else? Counsel Russell?
Mr. Chairman, a few years ago, when I was chairman of rules and, in fact, I think you were the only member self-appointed of that meeting when we finalized the revamp of the rules that the Law Department gave us. So I think that maybe part of, maybe a compromise on this item would be that it's not only sent to the Law Department, but also sent to the committee that's now the Combined Rules and Municipal Operations Committee, just to take a look at this rule and any of the other rules that are, especially in these days of COVID, while we're communicating online and people are calling in. I don't think, I don't think you or I or anybody in the Law Department envisioned anything like this happening. And I know that there's some discretionary that has to be added in there to the chair during these meetings. I mean, in the beginning of the meetings, we, we're only supposed to, you know, do what, a half hour? We're doing an hour, hour and a half, sometimes even longer. I mean, there's all different things. There may be this, maybe the committee on municipal operations and rules wants to take a look at the, at the whole rules package and see if there's things that need to be amended. So I would suggest or move that this not only goes to the Law Department, but also goes to the Committee on Municipal Operations and Rules, if the writer, Counsel Bergman, is okay with that.
Okay, so we amend that to send it to the rules, et cetera. Okay, somebody else that can amend it is to send the both and have a discussion. Look at the rules again, you know, and so roll call. Nico, I think you're on, you.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Caloria?
Yes.
Counsel King?
No.
Counsel Maro Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
She's not with us, I think.
Counsel Rivera? Counsel Rose?
No.
The button wouldn't hit, it's no.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Request me to review the policy regarding banning dogs on leashes of city common in the way of the number of residents moving nearby, Counsel Bergman.
Mr. Chairman, I brought this up because a number of people contacted me that they formerly lived in the Boston area and the Boston Common was accessible. I know we've done a great job with expanding dog parks. I know there's a level of respect on the common because there are some headstones and some deep folks buried there. But I also know that that area is certainly fenced off. So I'm wondering, in the history of why we haven't, why we can't allow people that live downtown to use the common. The presumption is they're cleaning up. We have that same issue with all the dog parks. I mean, we have to assume we're going to allow access, so people are going to do the right thing. So I just throw that out there. I would say before the current City Hall was built, there was a whole lawsuit over what to do with the cows and the horses that used to be parked on the common before the old City Hall was knocked down in eighteen ninety-eight and the new City Hall was built. So it's not alien to us to have animals on the common. I certainly am not suggesting we trash the common or mess the common, but I think responsible dog owners, whether they're in a dog park or whether they live downtown and want to use the common, could do that. And I'm just looking for a report as to why that can't happen and perhaps maybe an update on how we're doing with our dog parks as far as the dog owners complying with the, with cleaning up after the dogs, which I'm confident they are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel King, you want to be signed on to that? So, okay. Okay, so we get a report back and roll call.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Caloria?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Maro Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Okay. Request the manager to consider, we already did that one. Request city manager create a barrier, permanent or temporary, in and around the grate at the St. Paul Drive. We need to beaver brook for the purpose of safety, Counsel Rose.
Yes, not to belabor, we've had a number of people call in and support this order. And in addition to that, the new DPW Commissioner, Jay Fink, and I went out to this grate and observed some of its surroundings. I was able to give them quite a bit of the history of some of the issues here, and I'm confident there's going to be a good plan for the administration to address all the residents' concerns in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Roll, Counsel King wants to sign on. Okay, people want to sign on, that's fine. Okay, roll call, Counsel Coro too, okay.
Counsel King, Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Caloria?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Maro Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, I think everybody wanted to sign on if you heard me, Nico. Okay. Requesting manager to shelter appropriate residents from Spectrum to give a partial credit to all the residents who worked at service on January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Counsel Rose, Wally, King, Tumi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a number of, you know, office hours and recent community meetings where people brought to my attention that if you were actually able to call Spectrum and share with them your displeasure or share with them your experience, whether it's your kids in remote learning or losing a day of work or whatever barriers it was that you had related to this outage on this day, that Spectrum actually gave you a bit of a credit for it. And I think in a lot of the conversations that we had had, it kind of, we've came to the conclusion of, well, why do people have to call and request this credit? And maybe that, you know, came to the conclusion of the thought that it might not be a terrible idea to have the administration reach out to Spectrum and rather than have people have to call in and take the time to sit on hold and share their barriers, their issues, their challenges that occurred on this day, that maybe they would be kind enough to just replenish or credit the individuals who use Spectrum Charter for this outage this day. A loss of internet these days is not what it was, you know, a year ago. It's a loss of a day's work, it's a loss of a whole lot of things. It's a loss of what do you do with your kids on a day of remote learning? It provides a lot of barriers and challenges. So I don't mean to put the administration on the spot or put them in an uncomfortable spot. But it just felt like, rather than have, you know, the people who participate and use Spectrum to have to call on their own, just maybe, you know, collectively saying, this is what we're hearing from residents, this is what we're hearing from our councils and our administration, excuse me, our government and body, and maybe just having them do this without having people go through that process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we will send that to the manager. Counsel Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here I go violating rule thirty-five myself. So I'm just going to suggest or throw out. I'm sorry? No, sure is good, you can repeat it, I guess things good. I was going to say that I think it's a good order from Counsel Rose, and I would also just ask out loud if Counsel Rose wouldn't object to seeing if the Law Department, in addition to his order, could determine if, if there's any insurance in play for Spectrum, because I think it's an easier ask in the future to know if they're insured for outages like this, because then they certainly shouldn't be holding back refunds if they themselves can get the money back. So if Counsel Rose doesn't object, I think that might be something in addition to his order that'd be worth knowing for the future.
No objection at all, Mr. Chairman. I think that that's a great addition to what we're asking here. Thank you.
Okay, so roll, roll call.
Like to sign on to this, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, I think you're on there already, Counsel King.
Okay.
You are.
I don't have that, I don't have that version.
Counsel Coro wants to sign on. Don't hit me on it. Okay, so roll call. As amended.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Caloria?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Maro Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, request manager, request commissioner of public works and parks prioritize the repair to the Green Deal legal science or the Westfold Street as the scene. Counsel Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually going to make a motion to file this order. The administration and Commissioner Antonelli beat me to this and already have a plan in place to address this. So I'm okay with that plan and their proactiveness and beating, you know, having a plan in advance of me getting this counsel tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motions to file, roll call.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Caloria?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Maro Carlson? Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Rosen?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Request manager to consider offering a spring two thousand twenty-one leaf collection pickup service to the residents, Counsel Rosen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The people of Worcester, the residents, homeowners, rentals, renters, they appreciate the fall leaf pickup program and they participate. Some of the problems we've had, obviously, sometimes snow comes a little too soon. Sometimes people don't move their cars, and the city has been so nice the last couple of years, I guess during the fall pickup, they haven't towed cars, they, you know, haven't ticketed cars. So some people leave their cars there and leaves stay on the street because the sweeper has to go around the cars. But in any case, we all know it's a great fall program. So if we have a great fall program and people in the spring love to get out to their yards, finally clean them up, and they'd love to put the leaves and the stuff that maybe they didn't pick up last winter, last fall, they like to put it out in the street, but they're not supposed to. It's a few, it's street, it's sidewalk sweepings and little tiny twigs, I guess. I don't know exactly what they're supposed to be putting out in the spring, but I'd like to see them put out in the spring the same things, whether it's leaves or twigs or branches on the right side, the same items in the spring as the fall. I know there's a cost to it. I realize that, so that's why I said, ask the manager to consider it. And I hope the manager will come back with just the facts and figures. How much will it actually cost us? Because we had this discussion a year or two ago, and we really never knew how much it would cost to do this. So I bring it back, especially during COVID, where so many people have been, you know, tired, sick, depressed, anxious, in the house. They want to get out in their yards, I'm sure, in March and April and clean the yards. And they would love to have the city come by as they do in the fall and just take that material away. So if we can afford it, let's do it. If we can't afford it, the manager's going to cut us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Bergman?
I believe I'm a close sponsor on this one, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be very brief. I'm not going to repeat what Counsel Rosen said. I would just only add that, that a lot of times, Mother Nature wreaks havoc on us in the fall program. And as popular as it is, it's not always as successful as it could be because the snow hits early and then, or hits while we're doing the program, and it's difficult to pick up those leaves. I think a spring program would not only kind of make up for those situations where the fall program is imperfect. And we do start with the same district every time. I know several colleagues, I think Counsel Wally last, last fall, and myself have asked that question before. Why can't we rotate the districts around so that not every district is going to get, have the same risk of having early snowstorm? But my understanding at that time was we couldn't because of the number of residents in that district was a better scenario to start first. We have a new commissioner, and as Counsel Rosen said, they can take a fresh look at what the real cost was. I also have a recollection, when we were discussing this, I think it was last spring, the math was kind of hazy or fuzzy as far as what the real cost of this is going to be. As popular as that fall program is, I think a spring program that was affordable to the taxpayer would be as popular, because as has been said, snow covers your leaves up in the fall, which you don't get, you get in the spring. But once what nice weather comes, everybody wants their lawn looking pristine. So I think it's an opportunity for a popular program if we can afford it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Rose. Counsel King, do you want to speak or just sign on? Counsel Rose, go ahead.
No, I just had the same questions of, I'm sorry, I just had the same questions about costs. It's certainly something that if it's affordable, we should do. But I'm also conscious of the dozens and dozens of things that we're asking of the administration from a fiscal standpoint, given our current situation with budgets and COVID and everything else. So just look forward to a report. And again, just being mindful of the many things that we're asking when we don't. Uh, and again, just being mindful of the many things that we're asking when we don't know, uh, where we're even at with state budgets and every.
Okay, Council King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to sign on this is, I'd like to sign on this as well. Um, this is another timely and great order. Um, you know, I, I know we've had this discussion in the past. I hope we get to the point, um, where this is an annual. We don't have to, um, continue to bring this up on council. This is something that's done in the spring. I know there's some concerns about it in the past. And I certainly echo, um, the fiscal impact of this, um, that was referenced by my colleague, Council Rose. And yes, we have a number of competing priorities here in the city. Um, so we should be really mindful, mindful um, of how we are, um, doing with regards to expenditures. But this is certainly, um, something that we should continue to do. And I'm happy to sign on it. Again, I hope that this is something that we don't have to annually file orders on.
Okay, Council Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I'm gonna sign on. Of course, I think it's important to, to look at this again. It is a new administration. I would say when it was debated two years ago or three years ago, I was against the spring leaf pickup, uh, for two reasons. One was the budgetary implications. And I agree, I, I don't know if it was Council Bergman or Council Rosen, who did say the response at that point wasn't as clear as maybe we would have liked in terms of how much it would cost. But one of the other main reasons that I didn't agree to it last time was the manpower. And I think what we heard from the DPW was that during the springtime, most of the manpower or person power, female and male, was allocated, uh, for street repairs, uh, sign repairs, fixing berms, making sure crosswalks were painted. So I would wanna make sure that if we do look at this again, we have a clear understanding as to the resources available. And if we did went to a spring leaf pickup, um, how that would impact the other work that's currently being done. Thank you.
Council Russell?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would just ask when the report comes back that the manager uh, addresses the issue of uh, the funding from this, from the spring cleanup. It's my, my recollection is prop, is, is, is correct, comes from the water, um, the, the water account. Uh, and how that would be affected and whether that account can be used or can, or is being, or is prohibited from being used for anything other than water related. Just, just as a heads up, the manager is trying to get your attention, Mr. Chairman.
I got it. Mr. Manager?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the council is remembering all the factors that go into this. I know it's a very popular program and, you know, we all would like to do everything we can to be responsive to the, you know, needs of the community. It is a different program than string, spring street sweeping. The spring street sweeping is really designed to get that, um, salt and sand that have been accumulated through the winter treatment on the sidewalks and the streets off. And we do pay for it, as Council Russell mentioned, uh, significantly with our water, um, sewer enterprise accounts because it's a benefit to not having all of that sand and salt get into our wastewater system and into the treatment plant and all of the complications that have. So it's a benefit to the program to get that. If we were doing, um, just the, uh, the leaf picked up, it does, it's much more labor intensive. And again, I just remind folks, we are in a hiring freeze. So we are already down in DPW. So there's a lot of deferred work just from not having a full complement, folks. And as Council Wally rightfully mentioned, there's war memorials that get knocked over. There are, you know, guardrails that are, uh, injured, uh, impacted during the winter. There's all these kind of other cleanup things that we're trying to do. We're trying to get the ball fields ready and the parks ready, uh, in terms of spring. So when you're down 20% in staffing and you have your regular spring to get the whole city, the cemetery up and running in time for Memorial Day, et cetera, and you're down 20% to add another very labor intensive program. You know, it's gonna be a challenge, but we'll put all of that in the report. I, I appreciate, you know, it's something we all would like to do. It's a matter of not only the dollars, but the person power, uh, and whether we're able to do it. But happy to report back out on it.
Okay. So we got that. Yeah, I think Matt, well, I made a good point about resources. Is that at that time we're also opening up the parks and doing a lot of different type of work. So I just get a good comprehensive report. The thing is, coming back to the, uh, manager, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Maro Carlson, Council Rivera? Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, requesting manager.
I'm sorry, I'm a yes. I, I thought I said yes. I had the mute on by mistake.
Okay. Uh, requesting manager to work with representatives from the national grid to ensure that the Worcester Police Department is contacted with when electrical services in the city are shut off, especially during the overnight time periods. Council Correa. Council Correa with us?
Yes, I'm with you. Yes, thank you. Um. The reason I put this on is that we had, um, a, on the east side, there was a electric, um, power was notified to the residents and they were, it was shut off during the night. Some of the residents were fearful that the, they were off. They weren't sure if the police was not, were notified. And I think for safety reasons, the police should know that. They should patrol the neighborhood, make sure everything's all set. You know, people will come home and be disoriented. You know, why are my lights off? I mean, it's really, I think, a good practice to have. I think at one time we did have this or National Grid did contact the police. But I think this has just become something that, um, maybe the city manager couldn't have a conversation with some of the representatives and ask for safety reasons if we could implement more of a stricter policy. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King? Council Maro Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, requesting manager to provide counsel to report concerning the city's timetable for vaccine to the city's seniors. Federal requesting manager include and set report the feasibility of having seniors picked up free or charged by WRTA and brought to the senior center in a suitable locations. I said vaccines, Maro Carlson's and Bergman. We can just probably send this to the manager, since we already discussed it, but Mr. Council Bergman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm con- confident in saying that I think, uh, I could speak for Council, uh, Maro Carlson. That's when I could certainly speak for myself as a co-sponsor. We've, we've kinda hashed this out at the beginning of our meeting as much as we can. And we'll wait more information back from the manager when he has it and understanding. With the understanding that not, not all the information's available yet because we're dependent in a large part on what the state tells us needs to be done. So whatever your decision, uh, Mr. Chairman, it could, uh, just go back to the manager, I think. And, and with, with, uh, I think it's 11A. I think it's pretty much the same question. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King? Council Maro Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, requesting manager to consider working with the Commission of Health and Human Services, create ways to encourage future okay fast food establishments to reopen up their bathrooms for public goods. Council Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, similar to Council Rosen's item 11C, but with a little bit of a a nuanced difference. Um, what I'm suggesting is that there are a number of private businesses, particularly the fast food, um, locations or food restaurants in general that are open, um, that, that could, um, allow bathroom use, um, to the folks that need, homeless population that needs a place to, uh, have a restroom or rest facility. I would say, uh, I was at the grid the other day and I noticed their bathrooms are open and I noticed not just customers using them, but it seemed to me a significant amount of people that were coming in off the street and using it as well. That's kind of the concept, um, I'd like to throw out there. Uh, let's see if perhaps some of our good business neighbors, uh, would consider doing that. I know a number of them have closed their bathrooms because they are focusing on takeout. Um, and I know that, as the manager said earlier, there are other considerations that may be, uh, a down, a downside or a negative for those businesses to cooperate. But I would think some of our businesses might be willing to cooperate. And many businesses as cooperate would take some of the population that needs to use the restroom um, off the street and kind of avoid the situation that Council Rosen wasn't shy in describing, uh, earlier. So that's the order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King? Council Maro Carlson, Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, requesting manager to work towards establishments exploring the inclusion of anti-bias training as part of the annual in-service training as count via 2021. Council King? I hear you.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. You're back. Okay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just real quickly, um, this is, uh, something that, um, I think is, will be very helpful, um, to, uh, addressing some of the underlying, um, concerns that folks have had in the past. Um, I had the opportunity to participate, um, in a training, um, over a period of time with the police department. I've had some recent discussions with stakeholders in the police department, um, in regard for this. And what I'd really like to see is that it's stated, um, that we work towards having an inclusive, um, implicit anti-bias training as part of the annual in-service training beginning this year. Now, um, from my conversations with, with folks over on the police side, it sounds like they do have the bandwidth to be able to do that. We know that there's, uh, with the criminal justice reform, there's a training component to that. And this could, uh, perhaps nicely dovetail, um, and, um, complement that. Um, and really, you know, when we think about why anti-bias training is, is necessary, it's because it's unrealistic to think that a single training, a few hours of training will magically dissolve bias that we all have developed over a lifetime, myself included. Um, you know, and, and to incorporate training, um, on a yearly, annual basis, um, in order to improve efficacy in the short and long term is something that'll serve us all well. Um, you know, and, and really would like to, to see that, um, you know, happen, uh, because we know that, um, you know, this impacts how folks do their jobs. Um, and it impacts how folks receive in the community, um, you know, our, 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 uh, public servants when they're performing their duty. So we'd like to set forward and, uh, much appreciate the work that's already been done.
Okay, thank you. Now, so roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King? Council Maro Carlson, Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Um, we are on 11O to 11Z adopting a roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King? Council Maro Carlson, Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, uh, 13A, transmit a draft to social media, Paul, you just for the city council. And that Facebook page of city council's creed, including information relative to the best practices used in other communities. And a couple of council, this is Council Bergman's asked to hold it on, Council King? So, uh, we can hold that out. Okay, without question. Let's see what question?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I just got a message that my vote wasn't heard in the last five votes. So I don't know if Nico got those down. I got a text that going back to, uh, um, four, four votes ago. So I don't know if, if I need to do a reconsideration or.
No, we'll just add them on. What we've done in the past is add you on if, if, uh, after he listens to the tapes tomorrow, um.
They said that couldn't be heard.
Okay.
I was, I must have, I must have been on mute.
So, yeah, so we'll add you on to those five waters in the last, uh,
Okay.
last several hours.
Thank you.
Roll, roll call.
Including my, including my own, sorry.
Yep, roll call.
Mr. Chairman, what are we, what are we voting on? So we're holding 13A.
I'm sorry, no, this wasn't about 13A. We held 13A. Council King is asked to go back to be recorded as a yes vote on the last five items.
Okay, do you need us to vote for that? I thought you were a range. I thought you arranged with the clerk. I don't care. I'll vote for it. I'm just asking.
So, Mr. Chairman, kind of for clarification, I can make a notation that we've recorded Council King as yes for the last five votes.
Okay, I just thought you needed a roll call. I didn't want to break any rules. Okay, so, uh, okay, moving on. 13A is held. 13B, uh, placed on file, transmit information, communication of concern, the process used for 2020 election season to collect nomination signatures during the COVID-19 pandemic. And for report options for potentially decreasing the number of signatures for 21. Council Russell?
Chairman, I just wanna be clear, uh, through you to the clerk. So is he planning on allowing uh, the items that were done on the state election with the electronic signatures and that kind of stuff? Is he planning on, uh, uh, or do we need some special rolling from the state or something to do that?
Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Through the chair of the councilor. So, uh, the point of the communication was to provide you an overview of what happened in the 2020 state election. Um, that, you know, the electronic signature collection was only for the 2020 state, state election season. So it's not anything regarding 2021. At this point, uh, the charter reads that, you know, you know, folks running for city council, a large and school committee have to collect 300 signatures. They have to follow the same process as we've had in past municipal elections. In order to change that, it either has to come from a special act, it has to come from a charter change commission, or a, a, basically a, a lawsuit directing the city clerk's office and the board of election commissioners to change the nomination process in 2021. So as it stands right now, there is no change in place to change any of the past practices that we followed in 2019 and previous municipal election.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so the motion's to file.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman? If, if that, if that could be sent to, um, uh, municipal operations, legislative affairs. And also, and also I just had a question through the chair to the clerk's office, um, regarding this. Um, that, just has, has there been, um, any work done from the Worcester clerk's office with other city clerks? Um, any communication or collaboration on this issue as it relates to elections and COVID?
Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, through the chair of the councilor, at this point, we're still waiting for guidance from the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Uh, we know that similar sized cities will have elections, um, in September and November, including Boston, Springfield and, you know, similar sized cities. Uh, right now, we have no more information at this point.
Thank you. So there's been no, there's been no, um, collaboration with any of those towns or cities in the region between the clerk's offices or the election, um, uh, commissioners?
Uh, through the chair of the councilor, as I stated, some cities do have different deadlines. Some of them elect in the summer. And, um, they, some of them are here to set the, you know, the September election preliminary dates as well as the November dates.
All right, thank you.
Is that them all? Roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Correa? Council Correa?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Maro Carlson, Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey? Councilor Toomey?
Yes.
Councilor Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we have 14, we already did. We are on 15 courts of the Clean and Public Works. We are going to take 15A first. Council Wally, do you need to recuse yourself on that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so take 15A first. Roll call.
Council, Council Bergman?
Yes.
Councilor Caloria?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally? Has recused himself. And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, 15B to 15Z, except the document roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Caloria?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so then take the Clean and Public Works, 16A to 16Y on the roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Caloria?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes. Yes.
Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, 16Z. Council Wally can recuse himself and roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Caloria?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally recused himself. And Mayor Petty?
Yes, we have 17A through C, 18B.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I'd like to hold 17C for the rationale that I provided early, 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 a couple hours ago in this meeting. So if we if we couldn't just hold 17C, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll hold 17C. So then there's 17AB, 18LE, and 18AB through L, L, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Caloria?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, that brings us to the end of the meeting, I believe. Motion to adjourn, roll call.
Council Bergman?
Yes.
Council Caloria?
Yes.
Council King? Council Carlson? Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Rose? Council Rosen?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Toomey?
Yes.
Council Wally?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.